...that metro platoon, actually the three metro platoons, across that field on eleven different occasions, he could have stopped it. The best of our ability and based on our understanding, he did nothing.
He did not what?
He did nothing.
Did nothing?
He went along for the ride. So that's a command and control breakdown from my perspective when I have a two-star chief of police who is the senior person on the scene in charge of 600 police officers who marches behind 100 officers using less lethal weaponry and ammunition, moving a group of agitators into a larger crowd of 4,000 people. I think I have a right to expect more of my leadership team than that lack of action, if you will. Additionally, I had a commander at the other end of the park who gave the order, based on at least our initial investigation, authorizing less lethal force, who also did nothing as the metro unit moved into the area of the park that he was actually standing in. And as the thousands of people fled that park, they had it run by him.
Right.
He also did nothing. So when I talk about a command and control failure, the two senior ranking members who between them had over 70 years of experience in this department and they did nothing, well, basically the action I took against them within 24 hours, I think, speaks to my state of mind relative to my lack of confidence in their ability to continue commanding in this department.
Besides resigning them to somewhere else, is there any other action you can take against them?
We will be continuing to evaluate in terms of what action. Chief Carter has indicated his intention to retire from the department. Commander Gray is currently reporting directly to the chief of operations and as this case goes forward, we will make determinations as to what actions may need to be taken against him.
Because I just hope retirement isn't the only thing this officer can do. I mean, the rank and file need to know if an officer doesn't do his job, a command officer doesn't do his job, he doesn't get a chance to retire. He gets a chance to put himself in a situation where maybe there's some action that can be taken against him. Have you thought about any of those?
Nothing I can do to prevent him from retiring if that's his option, sir. And what I would suggest is the action I took against these two ranking members of the department is probably the most significant action that's been taken in years in this department against ranking members. You may recall that at the beginning, the cops were already saying, oh sure, it's going to be the same old story. We're going to take the brunt of the heat and the higher ups, nothing's going to happen.
Right.
I would also point out that I report to a civilian police commission and ultimately I will be held accountable by that commission based on my response as well as my actions involving this incident.
No, I might-
And that's something that I fully accept.
I might say, chief, when we met with you shortly thereafter with the mayor and everybody else, you were very open and very clear and you were not defensive, you were not, you know, trying to protect anybody. You were like us, wondering what went down and what needs to be done. So I appreciate your attitude, the way you project it. How many officers have we identified that have used either the shooting gun or the baton or something where they might have stepped over the line? Have we identified a number of them?
The internal affairs investigation is proceeding with that, attempting, as I've indicated, the three levels, those in which we have a complaint against this specific officer, in which an officer can be identified by badge or helmet number. Two, the issue of video that might then be matched up with that complaint. Three, video that we have in which we don't have a complainant and which we're taking initial action. In that instance, there was a video that was shown there of a, what appears to be a young man assaulted by three officers, two of whom striking him with their batons. Those three officers have been, the term we use is benched pending the further investigation. But under the department protocols, that's the internal affairs investigation that will move thoroughly, but we at this particular point in time have not interviewed all the complainants. Many complainants are not being made available to us by their attorneys. So in terms of doing a full investigation, both protecting the officer's rights under their constitutional rights and the police officer bill of rights, there's certain limitations and protocols to what we can do. And I would encourage the attorneys in these matters that if you have an individual who claims to have been injured by the Los Angeles Police Department, make them available to us or to the inspector general. Many of them are waiting until they file their lawsuits and then we'll have to pull that information on the depositions.
Laying out her concerns about the incident on May 1st, Councilmember Janice Hahn asks if the orders that were given were wrong or the way the orders were carried out was wrong.
I guess what I'm trying to get from all this was, was it the order that was wrong? Was any of those orders wrong to shoot with less lethal weapon, to disperse the crowd, you know, to move, to clear the park? Were those orders wrong or was it wrong in how it was carried out by the rank and file officers who were carrying it out? Were they doing what they were told to do or were even some of them, as we've heard, maybe crossing the line in how they took their office? I'm trying to kind of figure out what was wrong. Was it the order? If you had to do it again, would you still give the order to disperse? Would you still give the order to begin shooting those less lethal weapons? And is it ever appropriate to shoot? You know, there were some images of, you know, in the back. You know, one guy had one of those rubber bullets in his back. I mean, is that ever appropriate to shoot someone in the back no matter how far away they're? I mean, it looked like the order was given to disperse and it was very difficult to leave quickly enough to not be within that range of however many feet that it seems allowable to shoot the less lethal weapons. And I guess that's what I want to know. What was wrong? Was it the order or? And maybe, and the other thing is certainly the agitators were talked about, you probably talked about that before the event, those were agitators that we know kind of show up at those events, were aware of them. But what became the difference between, and there was one comment on the video about, this is a different crowd here than what we had before. So what becomes different from, I think we're all kind of sympathetic to this feeling against those agitators, but what transpires between knowing it's the agitators, the guys with the bandanas, guys throwing, till we're in the park now and we've got mothers with strollers and we've got news media and how is there training to differentiate between, you know, those agitators that were out there? Those looked really scary to me too. And then what we saw in the park, being pushed and shoved and beaten and shot out. What training helps with that? So those are just some of the concerns I have. Commander Gray, was it the order that was wrong or was it how it was implemented? And then how do we differentiate out there on the field between the agitators and between what really looked like innocent people in the park? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hahn. Earl Payssinger, like the chief and my colleagues at the table and all of us in this room, we're just extremely troubled. And to this day, having not yet interviewed all the individuals who were a part of this particular episode, we're still grappling for answers. It's not anything that really escapes us in terms of the depth of how it affected the city like Councilmember Hahn, I'm sorry, Councilmember Labange mentioned, but we're efforting to get there. Today was the first throes of really outlining some of the issues that have confronted us that day. And my great hope and expectation, as the chief mentioned, is that we come to grips with not only the sins of commission, but the sins of omission as well, not giving the proper leadership and guidance and direction from the top down, all of us included. But to the specific point of your question as it relates to training, we have embarked upon a very diligent effort to provide the kind of in-depth training to our very new command team that we think will really give them the ability to feel and understand not only the tactical dimensions of some of the challenges that we deal with, but those that exist in that framework of humanity.
With the threat of losing a quorum, that's the number of council members needed to conduct city business, the council stopped the floor debate and heard public comment on the matter. A motion to continue the item was considered and passed on a vote of nine to three. The Los Angeles Police Department and Board of Police Commissioners' report on the events occurring at MacArthur Park will be continued until Wednesday, June 6th. You can listen to city council meetings as well as committee and commission meetings on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West LA, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. Watch Council Week in Review for highlights of the week's council meetings and listen for item numbers associated with those discussions you have an interest in. Then go to the world wide web and listen to them in their entirety using the new City of Los Angeles video on demand feature. Visit the city's website at lacity.org and follow the instructions on the screen. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending June 1st, 2007. On behalf of Monty Duarte and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
In the city of Los Angeles, when duty calls, the LAPD responds.
Hey John, lower the gun, buddy. John, leave the gun.
Working as a team.
Go ahead and put the gun down. John, nobody's going to come at you, all right? But I'd feel a whole lot better if you were to lower that gun.
To protect and to serve.
Why don't you come back here to me, all right? All right, that's good. Walk toward me with your hands up, John. Put your hand up.
All units, go forth and secure.
Thanks for working with me.
2910, show me code six, send the article search for the Amber Alert.
To fight crime and to keep our streets safe.
Another positive hit on this bag.
We believe at this time that the vehicle is in our custody.
Any available unit to respond to the northeast corner, seventh and Broad Street Amber Alert.
Six K to the fifty, Roger.
14X11, show us responding.
I got you a way around.
This is it.
Let's go.
For the officers of the LAPD, it's all in a day's work. Protecting our families.
Look at your daddy.
They take pride in what they do.
Code from the Amber Alert, missing child found, in return to parent, suspect in custody.
LAPD is hiring. Become a part of the team. Visit us at joinlapd.com.
Hi, I'm Scott Smith. I live in LA. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council meeting for the 6th of June 2007. We are in the John Farrar Memorial Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday of the month at 10 -- of the week, excuse me, at 10:00 a.m., except for the first Friday of the month in which we meet at Van Nuys City Hall. Council President Eric Garcetti, and I'm joined here by Council members Jose Wezar, Tom Labonge, Jan Perry, Ed Reyes, Bill Rosendahl, and Dennis Zein. That means that we have seven members present, and we are waiting three more to constitute a quorum, which is two-thirds or ten of our fifteen members. Councilmember Cardenas and Grul -- Councilmembers Cardenas and Grul are excused to arrive a little bit later, and Councilmember Smith is excused for this entire meeting. We then are awaiting Councilmember Alarcon, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson. We're also joined by Bernard Parks. Thank you, Mr. Parks, for being here. If the clerk can click in, Mr. Parks. We are broadcast live on Channel 35, and we want to welcome our L.A. City Viewers. That is on our city's cable system. We are broadcast live each meeting, as well as rebroadcast in the evening. I want to welcome those viewers who are here with us. We're also available online through our city's homepage at lacity.org. We have live streaming webcasts of our council meetings, as well as video on demand of our past meetings, which are archived, and you can pull down on individual items that are before us. You can also click through our agendas, and there are hyperlinks to that video on demand. Our agendas are available at lacity.org, live in person at the Clerk's Office here, or in council chambers. And if you read through the agendas, they are split into sections of items that have had a public hearing and those for which a public hearing has not yet been held. Every item the city council considers will receive a public hearing, an opportunity for the public to hear their -- have their voices heard, either in council committee or in the full council. Items that have not had that public hearing in one of our committees are available for public testimony here in council chambers. If you would like to do so, please fill out a speaker card in the back, and our sergeants at arms would be happy to take that and ensure that you are heard today. Finally, items that are not on our agenda but are nevertheless under our jurisdiction are available for our general public comment period, in which the public can be heard on general items not on today's agenda. And again, just fill out a speaker's card, and we'd be happy to put that in the queue. Thanks again to the council members who are here, Councilmembers Wezar, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, and Zein. We are now at eight members and awaiting two more. Councilmember Alarcon, if you'll please join us, Councilmember Hahn, if you will join us, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson. As soon as we have two more members, we will begin the meeting, and thank you to members of the audience for your patience. We hope to start very shortly. Thank you. There's a second quorum call for Councilmember Alarcon, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson to join us. We need two of your four members to constitute a quorum. Again, Councilmember Wesson, if you will please join us, Councilmember Weiss, you'll make your way to council chambers, Councilmember Hahn, and Councilmember Alarcon. We are awaiting you, and the public is waiting as well. Thank you. Now, this is the final quorum call. Councilmembers Hahn, Councilmembers Alarcon, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson. We need you in council chambers as soon as possible. If I can ask the sergeants at arms assistance in bringing down any members who still may be lingering upstairs. We will wait a few more minutes. If we do not have a quorum, we will not meet today. Again, Councilmembers Alarcon, Hahn, Weiss, and Wesson, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Weiss. We're now just awaiting Councilmember Alarcon and Councilmember Wesson. We've been informed Ms. Hahn is going to be a few minutes late. And again, Councilmembers Cardenas, Grul, and Smith are excused either to arrive late or not to be here today. So Councilmember Wesson, Councilmember Alarcon, if you'll please join us as soon as possible. We are waiting one of you to begin the meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Grul, Hahn, Wezar, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zein, Garcetti, eleven members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. First order of business.
Approval of minutes.
Mr. Weiss moves, and Mr. Rosendahl seconds. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Parks moves, and Mr. Alarcon seconds. Without objection, those two will be approved. Next order of business.
Mr. President, would you like to go through public comments at this time?
Let's run through the agenda, and then we'll come back for public comment.
Items one through twenty-one are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay.
We have some requests for continuances.
All right, which items?
Item number eleven is continued to June 19.
Okay. Colleagues, any objection to continuing item eleven till June 19? If not so ordered, next items.
Item twenty-second is continued to June 13.
June 13. Sorry, which number is that?
Twenty-six, I'm sorry.
Okay. Why don't we wait till we get to that section real quick? So items one through twenty-one will open and close the public hearings. I do not see any speaker cards. Do we have any speaker cards that you have, Madam Clerk, on those? If not, we'll close the public hearings. Any specials, colleagues, one through twenty-one? One through twenty-one, any specials? Let's hold the ordinances on the desk till we have twelve members. And for the others, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
I think that's just item number twelve, and then for two through ten, we'll set those hearing dates for the 27th of June. We'll come back for the ordinances. Next items, please.
Next are items twenty-two through thirty-two, and those are items for which public hearings have been held. Item twenty-two is the confirmation of a city official. Would you like to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please. And it was twenty-six, you said, was continuation request?
Yes. Twenty-six is continued to June 13.
June 13. Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing that item? If not, we will go ahead and do that unanimously on numbers twenty-six. Any other specials, colleagues? That's twenty-three through twenty-five, which we'll hold on the desk as ordinances. That leaves twenty-seven through fifty-seven. Special items, twenty-seven through fifty-seven. And let's hold thirty-four as well as an ordinance. Colleagues, any specials? We're in items twenty-two through fifty-seven. Call thirty -- thirty-three is a continue -- thirty-three is a continuing testimony from Chief Bratton, is that correct? Let's hold that. Let's go ahead and hold that special. Okay, twenty-two through thirty-two. Any other specials, colleagues, twenty-two through thirty-two? Seeing none, let's go ahead. Twenty-six was continued, right? So twenty-seven, let's hold until we get the report. That leaves twenty-eight through thirty-two. We do have the reports, okay? But we did continue twenty-six, right, Madam Clerk? Okay, so twenty-seven through thirty-two, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, next items, please.
Next are items thirty-three through fifty-seven, and those are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
We do have cards on thirty-three. We have cards on fifty-three, and cards on fifty-four, so we will call those special. And...
Mr. President, we have some items for continued.
Okay, go ahead.
Item number fifty-three is continued to June 20.
Okay, is there any objection, colleagues, to continue that? If not, that will be continued. We did have a public speaker card that was for Miriam Fogler. Item fifty-three will be continued till the 20th of this month, Ms. Fogler. Next item.
Mr. President, there is also a request to continue item fifty-six to June 12.
Is there any objection, colleagues, to continue fifty-six till the 12th? If not, we'll continue that as well. Now it's time for any special items. Thirty-five, colleagues, through fifty-seven. Let's hold thirty-five on the desk as an ordinance. Three we have cards on. Thirty-four we'll hold as an ordinance. That leaves us thirty-five through fifty-seven. Any specials, colleagues? Seeing no specials, we'll go ahead and open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay. Next items, please.
That brings you back to items called special.
We have the closed session items as well. Let's go ahead and hold those on the desk.
Okay, closed session.
Fifty-eight through sixty-three, if there's no objection to that. Okay. Let's go back to public comment now. And our first speaker is Lucille Caruso. If you'd like to come forward, Ms. Caruso. And then Michael Calder will be after that. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you today?
Good, thank you.
I've lived in Los Angeles off and on since '91, and I hear this term stakeholder.
Would you -- will you just move the microphone down just a tiny little bit there? We can hear you better. Thank you, Ms. Caruso.
I've lived off and on in Los Angeles since 1991, and it's a great place. You get jobs right away. I mean, everything moves. It's just the last couple of years were bad, but I want to get to this point. People come to me, and they'll say that they're a stakeholder, or they pay their taxes. Some kind of thing presented that I never heard before in terms of Los Angeles, because to me stakes are like this piece of wood that you put in the ground. That's represented like on the ocean with the servicemen, because I think the Constitution and the economy is truly the stakeholder. And... Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caruso. Appreciate your testimony. Michael Calder is our next speaker. After that will be Oscar Johnson. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. I'm Michael Calder. I'm a Berkeley graduate. I'm also the author of a book, JFK versus CIA. I have an email from the Los Angeles Times reporter who broke the E. Howard Hunt story of a month ago, where E. Howard Hunt told his sons when he was dying that the CIA did in fact assassinate President Kennedy. What's important to the city council is that Hunt also mentions fellow CIA agent David Morales as a participant. David Morales is seen on film at the Ambassador Hotel the night of Robert Kennedy's assassination. Now, today's the anniversary of Robert Kennedy's death, and tonight I want to let the city council know that on the Discovery Channel, Discovery Times Channel, at 9:00 p.m. is a Robert Kennedy assassination special. I'm privy to know that they're going to present evidence of a second gunman shooting a point-blank into Robert Kennedy's head while Sirhan Sirhan is firing from in front. So I hope all of you know somebody who has the Discovery Times Channel. They also have a new tape that LAPD did not have in '68. The tape has more than eight bullets being fired. Sirhan's gun only holds eight shots, and it's looking more and more like Sirhan Sirhan is as much a victim as Robert Kennedy. Mr. Garcetti, may I present my book to you and some paperwork to the...
Sure, if you just give it to the sergeant at arms, we'll make sure we get that.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony today. Oscar Johnson is our next speaker. After that will be Walter Bechtel. Mr. Johnson, good morning.
Good morning, sir, councilman. My name is Oscar Johnson. I'm proactive in the city of Los Angeles and also a concerned citizen, and I have been very harassed and very humiliated by the Los Angeles Police Department. And I'm wondering, I'm asking, do the Los Angeles Police Department take drug testing? Do they take alcohol tests? Do y'all test the Los Angeles policemen for psychological evaluation? And seem as though they are, you know, very careless in killing innocent African-American people, though? And seem as though our rights have been violated. We don't have any connection with our public peoples in office that represent us. As the district attorney office, the chief of police, our city councilman, our mayor office, we have no connection with them. I guess the only people they respond to is the people that support them through their campaign. But I always thought that what they get, the knowledge they have, and I know the electoral officials have a lot of knowledge to help us, because we are dying and hurting people in Los Angeles. We're dying economically, we're dying physically, and we're dying emotionally. And we're really missing the moral fabric of what this country is supposed to stand for. But I see why we are fighting for democracy in America. I see why America went out to Iraq, and with that war, three hundred, world news, world news report, three hundred, three hundred, three thousand, four hundred Americans get killed in Iraq. Six hundred and fifty thousand Iraqis have got slaughtered in Iraq, in that massacre. We should end that war in Iraq, send the troops home, and impeach President Bush. But there much more should be did, though, but I know, as we as African-Americans, we as minorities, we are left out the planning and committed of our situation and our citizens. We don't have control of our communities. We have let other peoples come in and take advantage of our communities, to make all the money and all the capital, and we not seen visible in the business in our community that's very damaging to our outside. And our elected officials, they're not performing their duty towards us. And we should vote in different officials that can represent the will of all the people.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Walter Bechtel is our next speaker, and then we'll go out to Van Nuys for Miriam Fogler. Welcome, Mr. Bechtel, and good morning.
I was going to speak on number thirty-three. I don't know if you want me to do that now or wait.
If you could please wait on thirty-three. We have all the cards on thirty-three as well, so we'll make sure we include that then. Thank you. Miriam Fogler, out in Van Nuys.
Good morning. I guess Sharon Brewer didn't show up. I'm hoping she does. I have a mother that's pretty sick, and there's no transportation to get to the outskirts of Nevada there besides Las Vegas. If you know where Needles is, I'd like to get a plane to fly from LAX down there, please. I mean, you're talking about remodeling the LAX. I don't mind if it goes out of LAX, as long as something's better than nothing right now. We don't have any transportation. I'm going to probably... What I wanted to talk about is the LAPD, is that they need -- we need organization and class, and they need like the '60s and '70s, when they were, you know, together, you know, the rank and file and how they checked them out and everything. They need all that done. And also, number two is, I know I'm up here for a limited time, and that I never get to speak on things I need to speak on until the very last minute. I appreciate being heard and not having this meeting drag on two, three hours, and I'm sitting here, and I'm so tired. I get very, very sick sitting here a long time, and I have other things I need to do. So I would appreciate that I would have had a chance to be heard on twenty-nine yesterday, Mr. President, because I just was so tired yesterday. I just couldn't stay. So I would appreciate being heard on fifty-three and fifty-four before you proceed with the police meeting. And so I know that's going to drag on the afternoon, so I would appreciate that being done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. And I announced that fifty-three was continued, so I hope that will help inform your comments today. So we'll hear you on fifty-four when that comes around, as well as yesterday's meeting, which I think ended before -- at 11:15, so it was quite a quick meeting, but we always try to do our best to accommodate that balance of public comment and continuing the people's business of passing the legislation here. So I appreciate those comments. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker here in council chambers. After Mr. Sacks will be Candido Maris, and then after him will be Firpo Carr. Good morning.
Good morning, council members. Thank you very much. I've been in front of the city council chambers the last few weeks discussing the MTA plans to raise the fees for transit riders, and last week I was in front of the council regarding an item on your agenda for a study done by MTA or Metro. And I've asked the same question regarding the construction authorities, and fortunately last week, although that question wasn't answered, the question regarding the study done by Metro, why was LA, the city, going to allocate some funds to, if it turned, if it panned out? Two things. First, there was no monetary amount for the study that Metro is going to create, but more importantly, Metro was defended by Councilman Parks. So again, I'm in front of the city council. Yesterday's newspaper had an article about the Green Line being, the extension being denied by the state's legislature. Why do we need a construction authority? What is MTA's plans? We have, and I'm quoting in this article from Mr. Turner, Michael Turner, the government relations manager for MTA. "It's premature to move forward with one extension when it hasn't fully been funded. There are two rail lines under construction right now, the East Side Extension, which does not contain a construction authority, and the Expo Line, which is a construction authority. You also have the Foothill Construction Authority." What is the purpose of the construction authorities if the East Side Extension can be built for over $800 million? Where is the money going? MTA complains that they have a funding shortage. If the construction authorities, what is the budget for these construction authorities? Please, Mr. Parks, thank you for answering last week's question. Can you answer any of these questions? Anybody out there? Hello?
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. A couple items. One, in this year's budget, we will have a person, starting in the fiscal year July 1st, to help answer some of the questions that come up about other governmental jurisdictions. And I appreciate that there are some connections between the city and MTA, but we also get to the MTA number. It's my understanding construction authorities are when it crosses multiple cities in order for the jurisdictional issues to be met, but we appreciate your questions. Candido Maris is our next speaker, and Firpo Carr will be after that.
Thank you, Mr. President. It finally happened after sixteen years. I got stuck in the elevator. I was in there for fifteen minutes just a little while ago. I want to compliment those city workers who got me out, so please, unless you've ever been stuck in an elevator. But again, they did a wonderful job, and I appreciate that. Today's paper, DWP Wants More Money. Everybody knows here that I've been a critic of the Department of Water and Power, and I've applauded those of you who have stood up and asked the tough questions. I truly believe that we do need the upgrades, that the money needs to be spent to improve our power system and our water system. The Board of Water and Power Managers, led by Mr. Nahai, have done a wonderful job, but it's now your turn, Mr. President, council members. It's your turn to ask the tough questions. It's time to ask for an outside audit of the department before we go ahead with these increases. These improvements need to be made, but, Mr. President, council members, I am asking you to ask for an outside audit to protect the people of this great city. The people of this great city own the Department of Water and Power, and it's time for them to be, you know... I'm a little dizzy. I'll talk to you later.
Thank you. Glad that we could get you out of that elevator, and thank you for your comments. Firpo Carr is our next speaker.
Yes, good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for being on my radio show. The Dr. Purple Carr Show, may recall that, as well as other council members here, including Councilmember Parks, as well as Councilmember Jan Perry, and a few others, so I want to thank you all for that. Also, I may have inadvertently put the wrong thing on my cart there, sir. I'd like to speak about the reconfirmation issue of Chief Bratton.
Okay. The reconfirmation is in force, but I do believe the continuation of the MacArthur Park incident, is that what you meant to speak on?
Yes, yes.
Okay. We'll put item thirty-three down for you, and we'll make sure we call on you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carr. That closes our general public comment for today. If we can, now that we have twelve members, take up the ordinances and item thirty-five, I believe, which we forgot to vote on. So that's number one. Thirteen through twenty-one, twenty-three through twenty-five, and thirty-four and thirty-five. Okay, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. If there's no objection, thirteen through twenty-one, we will send forth with. Mr. Rosendahl's asked for reconsideration of item twenty-eight. As if there's no objection, let's go ahead and let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And twenty-eight will be back before us. We'll call that special for Mr. Rosendahl. If we can take up the first item called special, please.
Okay. First item called special is item number twenty-two, and that's the confirmation of Mr. Steven Oranga for the Lasers Board.
Okay. We're going to ask our nominee to come forward. Is he here, Mr. Oranga? Oh, we hold that on the desk until... Oh, there he is. Thought I saw him earlier. And this came through our Personnel Committee, is that right, Mr. Zein? Budget and Finance, I'd like to recognize our Chair of Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Mr. Oranga came through the Budget and Finance Committee, and maybe you would just like to give a short presentation of why you have an interest in this appointment and what impact you could make on our pension system.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. I am a member of Lasers, retired over two years now. I got the call from the mayor's office about a month ago. It was quite a surprise, and just to give you an idea of how qualified I am, the first thing I said to Tom at the mayor's office was, "I'll get back to you, I got to talk to the wife." And some of you who know my wife know that was a good decision. While she was very happy for me, I feel honored to be nominated by the mayor. I have a family history with Lasers. My dad retired from the city. He, when he retired, I took him to the Lasers Board and staff, and they set him up, you know, and they were very good with their service. And then he passed away, and then my mom became a surviving spouse member of Lasers. And again, we took her, my mom, to the Lasers staff, and again, the service was excellent. And then when I retired, I also went to the Lasers staff. So Lasers has been there for my family, and it's an honor to be here, to be afforded the opportunity to serve on the Lasers Board so that we can ensure that Lasers is there for your family and all our members. So it's a matter of public service. It's that simple, to serve, to come back to the city and to serve on the board and see where I can contribute. At this point in time, I'm still on my learning curve. There is a lot to know about the Lasers system. As far as I know right now, it's in fairly decent shape, and hopefully I'll find a way to make a contribution.
One of the things also you may want to relate is your background, your most recent assignments in the city of L.A. before you retired.
Before I retired, I was with the community... Before I retired, I was with the community, well, Recreation and Parks. I was in the Finance Division and I administered the grants program where we, uh, had somewhere in the neighborhood of over $300 million in various, uh, capital grant programs, starting from the federal government, the state government, down to the local government, Proposition K, Proposition A, uh, state bond projects, Proposition 12, Proposition 40. And our job was to execute all the contract agreements with these various funding sources, track the money, and make sure the money was spent appropriately on, on those capital projects. That was my last position. Before that, I worked for the Community Development Department, uh, in managing the workforce development programs. My last, uh, task before I transferred to Recreation and Parks was to transition the system to the, what you have now, uh, one-stop workforce development system. Uh, so that's in summary what I, what I did for the city of LA.
Colleagues, I think it was clear during the committee that we rarely have an opportunity to have, bring forth a prior city employee who also is fundamentally involved in the system in which he's being asked to review, second generation in the sense of family member employee of the city, and also clearly understands, uh, what the benefit issue is for a pension and to be looking for the long-term health of that plan. And so, uh, as the Budget and Finance Committee moved forward, we'd ask for unanimous vote on Mr. Uranga's appointment.
Mr. Alacon is our next speaker, and then Mr. Weiss, Mr. Reyes.
Yeah, having, uh, returned to the city anew, um, how much money is in the pension system?
Uh, right now it's, uh, 11 billion plus. My understanding is that, uh, this fiscal year ending, uh, June, up to this point in time, the, the pension syst-, uh, assets have grown by about 20%, so it's been a good year for, for Lasers. Of course, the year is not over, but...
And what do we invest our money in?
Uh, it's a variety of things. Uh, as I understand it, it's in the equities market, it's in real estate, it's in, um, basically bonds, real estate, equities.
To what extent do we, uh, invest in local jobs?
Well, the, uh, my understanding is that there is a, a growing, uh, amount of, uh, allocation in this, uh, for, uh, affordable housing, so I guess that would help with the construction part of it. Um, I'm not sure where we are right now, if we're maxed out on that program for affordable housing or not.
Yeah.
Uh, so on the local level, as I said on Monday, the, uh, I would like to see Lasers, uh, more involved on the local level, if it's possible, because there are benchmarks that the investments have to return, so...
Benchmark is a buzzword for doing whatever they want to do with the money, but not investing in local, uh, investment. Now, we understand that when you invest locally, the dollars circulate three times. When you invest in, uh...
Internationally.
Sweden, it, it doesn't have that circulation effect. So are you, uh, are you going to be a member that recognizes that there are ancillary benefits besides the bottom line that can benefit the city more greatly than investing in some country, uh, 100,000 miles away? Well, not 100,000, but, but tens of thousands of miles away and creating local jobs as a way to fix Los Angeles problems and using this investment opportunity as a way to do that? Would you be one to encourage, uh, funding of local projects that create local jobs as opposed to creating jobs in, uh, third world countries and elsewhere that, uh, that don't have that circulation effect and benefit?
Uh, absolutely. I'd be very sensitive to that. Uh, I have said to, I've been briefed by the Lasers staff and that one of the first things I said to them was, uh, I'm very keenly interested in how Lasers impacts the local economy, the city of LA. And, uh, I don't think there's actually any report on right now what that impact is. So if it's possible, I'd like to see that, uh, be done.
Great. Well, first, members, let me just say that I've known Mr. Uranga for many, many years, uh, when he worked in departments, but also when he was an advocate for our community on a wide variety of issues. Uh, he's an outstanding person, but most importantly, I think he will be a voice to raise concerns about how Lasers is investing money, uh, just for the sake of, of making money as opposed to looking at other ancillary benefits that can be derived from, from investment, such as improving the quality of life for people in Los Angeles. And, and I want to, uh, tell you that I'm looking to your leadership, uh, to drive that agenda in Lasers, and I will be your partner in doing so. So in any way, uh, I can be helpful, please, uh, feel free to, to come forward. We, we need to do a better job of, of creating, uh, opportunities here locally as opposed to sending our money elsewhere and not getting the maximum benefits that we can socially as well as financially for our members.
Mr. Weiss is our next speaker, and then we'll turn to Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to congratulate you and, and welcome you and, uh, and thank you for your service. Um, I want to give you a heads up that either today or Friday, uh, Mr. Garcetti and I are going to introduce a motion that is going to make its way, uh, towards you at Lasers, which relates to, um, policy of Lasers, uh, with respect to companies that do business with Iran. There is currently a bill that's working its way through the state legislature. I think it was passed by the Assembly and is working its way to the Senate. I could be wrong, it could be the opposite, but I think that's the right, uh, location, um, that will do the same thing with respect to CalPERS, and we're going to introduce sort of a companion piece with respect to Lasers. And, uh, it's a very significant issue. Recently, Lasers, uh, joined a number of other public, uh, pension funds in voting to divest from companies that do business with Sudan. And, um, so this is an analog to that, uh, relating to a country that's developing, certainly trying to develop weapons of mass destruction, and I look forward to, to, to your counsel and your participation in that issue.
Okay, yes, and, uh, I was at the meeting when the board took the vote on the Sudan issue, and they also, at the same meeting, uh, voted to pass a geopolitical risk, uh, policy. So now we have a framework to review such things as Iran and, and so, um, and we'll see how that goes when we get to reviewing your motion and...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to rise and voice my support for Mr. Uranga. Um, I've been watching you work behind the scenes at many levels, and I'm very pleased to see you here today. It's great to see an individual that hopefully can be viewed as a role model for those city employees who are going through the ranks in this great city. And look at you as a way in which we learn how to give back.
Yes.
And the fact that, um, the responses to Councilor Alacon's questions are, are right on the button. I kept pushing, when I first started five years ago, asking the question, "How is our pension fund doing when it comes to sound investment for our infrastructure, for our housing, and other needed items that speak to quality of life?" Especially when you put in perspective how many city employees actually don't live in the city? How many, how much of our salaries, of our own budget actually nurtures other cities as opposed to our own commercial corridors, our own economies, and our own livelihoods, and the quality of life in our own city? And I guess we all have to do our own soul searching when it comes to that decision. But, uh, it's one of those circles that we can stimulate income, income will come back, and that's exactly what I hear you saying. I look forward to working with you on enhancing and stimulating more opportunities of that nature. So thank you and I give you my best to Ms. Casada for all her hard work over the years in the school board and all the good things she's done for this great city.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And our last speaker is the, the pensioner, also known as Dennisine.
Thank you. And, uh, that's what I want to talk about. There are many retirees...
Yes, sir.
...that survive on that pension that they worked many years for with the city of Los Angeles. And I just want to remind you with all the issues that we've discussed, the Sudan, uh, the investments in the city of Los Angeles, that the big responsibility is to make sure that those funds do not end up like some jurisdictions, uh, go in the wrong direction where they've made some poor investments. Uh, San Diego in particular, their pension fund was in terrible, terrible shape. Uh, they made some very poor decisions on that. So it's with that, uh, issue that the pensioners who are drawing the pension, the employees who are putting into that out of their paychecks, uh, and many businesses, uh, including the airline industry, have eliminated pensions for the most part. So what we want to do is make sure that the people who rely on that, who live on that, who survive on that, and there's many pensioners that have left the city service over the years that use that for their income. They don't have social security, they've got that city pension. Uh, so we want to make sure that those investments are wise investments, and I have no problem with the proper course, but that's what basically you'll do to make sure that the investment comes back. And those billions stay in billions and don't drop down, drop down to millions and then thousands, and then all of a sudden there's cutbacks with them. We've seen it happen in the automotive industry, as I said, the airline industry. So it's with that intention, uh, and Mike Hernandez gave some good words where he said, "Don't beat yourself when you go up to the table." So you got a good fan in Mike Hernandez back. He's back, he's got your back right now, sitting there. Uh, but I, I know you'll do well on that and your dedication to the city and all the other activities you've been involved in. Uh, you're drawing the pension, so there's a personal investment in there for you all too. You won't have to recuse yourself, but there's a personal investment also. So wish you well with that endeavor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Our last speaker is Mr. Weisar.
Thank you very much, and I just want to thank you, Mr. Uranga. You are coming out of retirement to continue to serve the city. We all appreciate that, and I appreciate you as well, showing, uh, what a good constituent from CD14 is all about, giving back to the city. So thank you so much, and I look forward to discussing many issues with you about Lasers, uh, and particularly about accessibility and how we provide, uh, the information our, uh, that users need. So I look forward to discussing that with you as we go forward. And thanks again, and appreciate you, uh, coming back to serve the city of LA.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weisar, Mr. Rosendahl.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
It's good to see you again.
Thank you.
It's $11 billion?
Uh, right now, it's about $11 billion, probably more, but, yeah.
Um, when we were in committee, we, we talked about how could that money be invested, A, for the highest return, and B, uh, to do some social value, good things within the city? I'd like to hear your talk on that.
Uh, the, uh, well, I'm a local guy. I mean, I, I, I was born and raised in the city of Los Angeles. And, uh, you know, my career was with the city of Los Angeles. I, I've been drawn to public service to help try to contribute to, uh, improving our, our local economy, our, our community. And, uh, I, you know, I believe that, um, where we can, if we can leverage, uh, city resources, uh, regardless of where it comes from, to impact our local economy, then we should do that. And, uh, whether it's, uh, in those areas of, of the environment, where affordable housing, or, uh, whatever it may be, uh, we should always be looking first to the city of LA and see where the opportunity might be without, without jeopardizing the fund and not meeting our, our investment benchmarks.
Uh, that is music to my ears. The environment and affordable housing are two huge issues. Look, right now, these G8 are meeting over there in Germany and they're talking about, uh, climate issues, you know, and, and the German prime minister wants more teeth in it, our president is demurting at the moment. But we got to deal with our environment seriously, otherwise we're not going to have much of a planet left at this rate. Um, when you look at that issue, would it be something you could entertain to invest in like solar, uh, that is now becoming more in place? And we are sunny Southern California.
Uh, I've often wondered that, just on a personal level, why we don't have more of a viable solar industry in LA. I mean, it does make sense. Uh, I have a home in the desert and it's not there either. So, I mean, it, it doesn't make sense to me. Uh, I'm not sure what the answer is, but it's certainly something we should be looking into. So, you know, it's, um, and it's just, uh, as far as I know right now, the dynamic between maintaining our, our, our benefit payouts on the health benefits and the pensions, getting the investment returns to make sure we're viable, and then finding ways within that framework to do things that are, are good for LA, that's what I would be interested in doing.
And when you mentioned affordable housing, back to the same issue, we're in a crisis on our housing in the city. I, it's a joke. Uh, we had a measure on the ballot. Unfortunately, it needed two-thirds vote, which is stupid. It should have had 55% and, and be allowed. But be it as it may, we were a couple of points shy of the two-thirds vote to have a billion dollars in play that would have a multiplier effect and make a dent in homeless and affordable housing. Well, hopefully we'll get it back on the ballot and there'll be better leadership in the context of the people understanding it and therefore everybody buying into it. How do you see affordable housing as a component of this?
Well, we are doing, as I understand it, Lasers is doing some affordable housing right now. Uh, I'm not sure where they are in terms of the, the amount allocated for that purpose, whether they've already reached their maximum. There might be some more room to do some more of that at this point in time. Uh, how much more we can increase that, uh, is something that we'd have to, uh, review and discuss that. Again, always with the idea that any investment we make, where Lasers makes, does have to contribute to the bottom line. Now, there are projects, they use this term double bottom line. The double bottom line is that it gives a return that we're looking for, but it also benefits the local community, such as affordable housing. So if we can find more of those opportunities, then sure, we should do it and...
What I'd like to see happen, since very little play that we have with you other than the confirmation process, okay? You're great and, and I'm glad you're stepping up to the plate to take on some very serious issues for us all. But I would like you to go back to the commission and tell them that the city council member, at least Rosendahl, and I'm sure my colleagues are all in play on this, that I would like the executive director of this to come before Budget Committee, uh, with a plan of how we can begin to look at that $11 billion having some real serious impact on both affordable housing and on environmental issues. And I charge you with telling him that, or her, whoever runs the bureaucracy for you, and we look forward to them coming before the Budget Committee with it. If I need to do a motion here on the council floor to order it, I'll do that, but I'd like to make it a friendly comment right now, and I'd love for you to get back to us and tell us that there will be a presentation made before Budget and, and obviously possibly before planning and, and before housing, uh, and, and before, uh, the DWP Committee that Jan Perry has on environmental things to show how we are aggressively looking at our $11 billion on how we can invest, A, in the city, B, in environmentally friendly and, and sensitive issues of the environment, and obviously the affordable house. I have that commitment?
Absolutely. I don't think you need a motion for that.
Good.
Hopefully the general manager's listening to this right now, so...
Well, I hope he is too, and, and I want you to let me know if in fact someone's going to move forward with it. If not, I'll make a motion going forward.
We'll make sure it happens.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
And we'll, we'll ensure that happens, Mr. Rosendahl. And I know, uh, Lasers has, uh, made recent investments in, uh, new housing fund for the workforce housing in the Los Angeles area, as well as a green fund as well. So we'll make sure we get that information out there and see where we can expand it more. So thank you, Mr. Uranga, extraordinary nominee, and appreciate your, uh, testimony before the council. So with that, that's the end of the speaker queue, and let's make this official. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Congratulations. A round of applause for our commissioner. Forthwith without objection. Uh, if we can take item, uh, Mr. Rosendahl, did you want to take 28 now, or do you want to wait on that?
I have a group behind the room there trying to work things out.
Okay, so we'll hold that on the desk.
If you can hold that up the desk.
No problem. Let's take item 54. Miriam Fogler is, uh, Speaker in Van Nuys for item number 54. Make sure we can get that in time for you, Ms. Fogler.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. President. I hope this happens all the time, because it would be helpful to me. Uh, Sharon Brewer has brought up the fact is that there's been a lot of special, these special events have been, you know, you add up. Well, some of them are good, like, uh, number 55 today, that's a good one, and I didn't put it down for card, because, you know, I don't take this on when I have to. So I just want to say I support that one. 53, so, the, uh, one of them is not, uh, good to do because it's, it's, again, like, it's a private thing, they can, they can pick up the tab. Yesterday you had on item number on the, uh, on the agenda that was for the BET Awards. That should be, they should pay for it themselves, they should pick up the tab. And also Time Warner from last week's agenda, they should also pick up the tab. We're talking about private companies. They should be able to pick up the tab. We're having a financial crisis in the city, and also you're talking about how we can invest the $11 billion of the retirement, because this is, this is, this is a special fee, you know, special event thing, because this ties into the Lasers retirement, because all the money that the city has, it ties into very much with the retirement, how retirement's much with the retirement, how retirement's going to be taken care of with its LASERs. So I want to make sure that the system is sound. And the DWP and LAPD should be having that same thing, affordability and environmental, too. If it's going to be, one, the LASERs should be all carried under the special thing, because these are all special things that you want to have the city pick up. So for public things, that's important, but for private, we shouldn't not have to pick that up. The city should get reimbursed. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes our comments for that item. If no council members wish to be heard, let's go ahead and open the roll on those, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Folks, we are waiting. The chief is coming at 11:30, so we have about 35 minutes until he will be here. We have the item that we're holding on the table, Mr. Rosendahl, item 28, which will continue to do so. Other than that, Madam Clerk, does that just leave the closed session items? Okay. So I think we will now, if there's no objection, take up our closed session items. For members of the public that are here, we will come back into open session. So if we ask your indulgence, we're going to have to clear council chambers for our closed session items. I can ask the Sergeant-at-Arms assistants. We will come back probably in about 11:30, no matter what. Whether we're through those items or not, we will reopen. So please come back for 11:30, and we look forward to seeing you then. According to California state law, we will now take up closed session items for legal matters before the council.
...
Back into open session, colleagues.
I've got a long list of things to do.
Here, we took action on two closed-session items. Mr. City Attorney, do you want to... Madam City Clerk, either one, do you want to identify the two items?
Mr. President, we have item number 58 in the settlement in the amount of 2.5 million in the case of Ishmael Morales versus the City of Los Angeles.
Okay. Please open the roll on that settlement, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. The next item that we voted on in closed session?
Next item is item number 61, and that is in the settlement in the amount of 190,000, and that is in a case entitled Timothy Allen Zemba versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open the roll on that item as well, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Mr. City Attorney?
And for the record, the vote in closed session on that was 13-0 with council members Perry and Smith absent.
Thank you. And if we can, please send both of those without objection forthwith to the mayor. So ordered. Okay. Next, we'll come up... Item number 33 is before us. We are... The chief is joining us as well. And as he comes in, we will take up item number 33. Okay, colleagues, we have this item before us. We did have a public hearing on this, though we do have a number of public speaker cards on this item, just to let the council know. And that would require a motion from the floor to reopen the council hearings, and we can do that either before or after continuing questioning and testimony. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 public speaker comment cards on item number 33. In the meantime, I know there are a number of council members who did not complete their questioning, so folks want to line up on the speakers' queue and go ahead and press their speakers' buttons now, and we'll make sure we jump in as soon as the chief walks in. Thank you. I'd like to recognize Mr. Reyes, our co-chair. I know Mr. Weiss is joining us back here shortly, but to reframe and to begin, and I believe the chief is coming in as we speak, but I'd like to recognize Mr. Reyes first.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, as you know, we wanted to continue this item from the last session when we entertained and addressed these issues. But my understanding is that we have a few individuals who would like to be part of the public comment period. So, Council President, if we can allow for public comment, then I can continue with the process and engage in this issue.
Okay. Now, I have 11 cards for public comment. We will take those at the outset. A minute per speaker, please. Madam Clerk, I appreciate folks' understanding, and since we had the public hearing, I know that's a little bit of a tight space, but as much as we can pack into a minute each, that allows to continue in the questioning. Firpo Carr is our first speaker.
A minute. I thought it was going to be two, Mr. President, but I'll go ahead and squeeze this in, as you say.
Thank you. We'll see if we can extend some more after that. Thank you.
Okay. I would just like to say that endemic in the police department's pattern of racism, as I see it, and as apparently others see it, is a manifestation... The latest manifestation is the LA Times article, "Black L.A. Police Officers Protest a Promotion." Chief Bratton has protested a man who's used the word nigger several times, has had a noose in his office, that is, the individual that he's promoted, according to this, and according to Ronnie Cadel, who's a sergeant with the police department and who I've spoken with, and who is also the president of the Oscar Joel Bryant Foundation, the organization of black police officers, even indicating that there's a problem there. You have white police officers with the PPL, the Police Protective League, and then, of course, you have the Oscar Joel Bryant Foundation. This is directly in connection with the MacArthur Park issue, all of it, at least to some extent, being based on race, but I'll talk more about that later. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and thank you again for your understanding. Pete White is our next speaker. After that will be A.C. Hassan.
Good morning. We continue to say that Bratton must go. We must send Bratton packing back, back, back to Boston. Over the weekend, this Sunday, an African-American woman, 80, 85 pounds, was assaulted, beat down in the middle of the street while 250 bystanders watched by LAPD. Was May Day an anomaly? Was it an aberration? No, it was not. It is the pattern and practice of the LAPD, and is the pattern and practice of an LAPD under the guidance of Chief Bratton. Let's not play politics. Let's not allow the powder keg that's simmering in the community to explode. Let's hold Bratton accountable. Let's hold these BS stats that he continues to put out there accountable to what it really is. Let's say that the misconduct, the 3% increase in misconduct, means people are sick and tired of the situation as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is A.C. Hassan, and after that is Dogon.
O.C... It's O.C., Hassan, sir.
My apologies, O.C.
Yeah, I live downtown, and I was on 4th and 6th and Gladys Street about to shower, and there was a van there that day across the Gladys Park. So, I came out to look at the balcony, and I seen an Afro-American female running, and when she was apprehended, I seen some unnecessary excessive force conducted by LAPD. I'm only here today because I never witnessed a woman being treated bad, that abuse so thoroughly and so abusive by the police department. It seemed like they were trying to send a message by using her as an example. They allowed her to get up two or three times, they even allowed her to run across the street and tripped her down, and this event went on for about anywhere from five to eight minutes. It took... The woman weighed very little. She looked like she needed more mental help than anything. The most that she could have had, if she had anything, would have been a $20 rock, maybe 10. If the officers reported the incident based upon the stop and search procedure of the Fourth Amendment, perhaps if they... She went to trial on that particular incident, and they reported the incident correctly, and she filed a 1538.5, she could have been dismissed upon illegal search and seizure.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Dogon is our next speaker, and then Steve Diaz will be after that, and then Jay Thomas.
General Dogon, Los Angeles Community Action Network downtown Skier Row. June 3rd, around 1 o'clock, LAPD four white male officers beat the hell out of an 85-pound old black woman. The next day, June 5th, on the same street, a 50-year-old black man was also beat up, you know, and arrested for no reason of all. The film coverage, you got LAPD cameras on the street, LAPD refused to give up footage. They're claiming the cameras are not working. The people in the community are in outrage. Today, right now, I just left Skier Row, and LAPD officers are riding around, mad-dogging people, looking at people crazy, jacking up folks for no reason of all, and this is in light of the MacArthur Park incident, you know, LAPD haven't learned nothing, because this is a pattern of abuse. This is how they get down. This is the way LAPD operates. It's always been like this, and until we get rid of folks like Bratton, it's always going to be like this. LAPD is directly responsible for all the major riots that happen in L.A., and they're going to be responsible for the next one that happened in L.A., because it don't seem like City Council members... Look at it. Y'all ain't even paying attention to what the hell I'm saying.
Our next speaker is Steve Diaz. Thank you, sir. Steve... Sir, I'll warn you once... There's a... All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole. Personal, impertinent, and duly repetitive slanders and profane remarks are prohibited, so consider yourself warned. Mr. Diaz is our next speaker.
Yes, my name is Steve Diaz, and I'm here today representing the Los Angeles Community Action Network. After May 1st, Chief Bratton announced several command changes, of which Central Division leadership were promoted to commanding staff, and additional staff was promoted to central area captain. Since '06, Centrator leadership has concentrated in arresting over 6,000 people in Central City East, and has additionally ticketed over 6,000 people. Recently, the African-American female was beaten through by Central Division officers. This clearly shows a lack of leadership, and clearly shows how abuse is rewarded by the Los Angeles Police Department if officers such as Central Division leadership are rewarded with promotions. This clearly shows lack of leadership by Chief Bratton. This also clearly shows how the institution as a whole has flaws, and we must fire Chief Bratton, and we also must reform the institution and really give people control over the institution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jay Thomas. After that, we'll go to Miriam Fogler and Van Nuys.
Good morning. My name is Jay Thomas, and I represent the Los Angeles Community Action Network, and I'm also a current member of VFW, which is Veterans of Foreign War. Unfortunately, I did two campaigns out here for that flag. I don't know why, but what I'm here today is to bring you a simple toned-out message because of May 1st, because of my people, my community, getting beat down by the lapdogs that call themselves LAPD. Check this out. Either the city council, Bratton, the council members get this together, or look at me as a good housekeeping seal with a blatant guarantee: We will do it for you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Miriam Fogler and Van Nuys. After that, we'll come back to Walter Bechtel here in Champaign.
We're having a difficult technical problem down here, and I'll tell you, I go for the LAPD 1,000%, even though I know that they're only human beings. We all have to work together. Like I said earlier, what we need to do is have every officer evaluate himself and see what he is at in his life or her life, and, you know, and not be under scrutiny, because this is their job. Their job is to protect our society from the criminal elements, terrorist elements, and we have to be on the alert, too. The city...
So folks want to line up on the speakers queue and go ahead and press their speakers buttons now and we'll make sure we we jump in as soon as as the chief walks in. Thank I'd like to recognize Mr. Reyes, our co-chair. I know Mr. Weiss is joining us back here shortly, but to reframe and to begin, and I believe the chief is coming in as we speak, but I'd like to recognize Mr. Reyes first.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, as you know, we wanted to continue this item from the last session when we entertained and addressed these issues. But my understanding is that we have a few individuals who like to be part of the public comment, period. So, Council President, if we can allow for public comment, then I can continue with the process and engage in this issue.
Okay. Now, I have 11 cards for public comment. We will take those at the outset. Minute per speaker, please. Madam Clerk, I appreciate folks' understanding. Since we had the public hearing, I know that's a little bit of a tight space, but as much as we can pack into a minute each, that allows to continue in the questioning. Firpo Carr is our first speaker.
A minute. I thought it was going to be two, Mr. President, but I'll go ahead and squeeze this in as you say.
Thank you. We'll see if we can extend some more after that. Thank you.
Okay. I would just like to say that endemic in the police department's pattern of racism, as I see it, and as apparently others see it, is a manifestation, the latest manifestation, is the LA Times article, "Black LA Police Officers Protest a Promotion." Chief Bratton has protested a man who's used the word nigger several times, has had a noose in his office, that is, the individual that he's promoted, according to this, and according to Ronnie Cadel, who's a sergeant with the police department and who I've spoken with, and who is also the president of the Oscar Joel Bryant Foundation, the organization of black police officers, even indicating that there's a problem there. You have white police officers with the PPL, the Police Protective League, and then, of course, you have the Oscar Joel Bryant Foundation. This is directly in connection with the MacArthur Park issue. All of it, at least to some extent, being based on race, but I'll talk more about that later. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and thank you again for your understanding. Pete White is our next speaker. After that will be A.C. Hassan.
Good morning. We continue to say that Bratton must go. We must send Bratton packing back, back, back to Boston. Over the weekend, this Sunday, an African-American woman, 80, 85 pounds, was assaulted, beat down in the middle of the street while 250 bystanders watched by LAPD. Was May Day an anomaly? Was it an aberration? No, it was not. It is the pattern and practice of the LAPD and is the pattern and practice of an LAPD under the guidance of Chief Bratton. Let's not play politics. Let's let's not allow the powder keg that's simmering in the community to explode. Let's hold Bratton accountable. Let's hold these BS stats that he continues to put out there accountable to what it really is. Let's say that the misconduct, the 3% increase in misconduct means people are sick and tired of the situation as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is A.C. Hassan, and after that is Dogon.
OC, it's OC Hassan, sir.
My apologies, OC. Thank you.
Yeah, I live downtown, and I was on 4th and 6th and Gladys Street about the shower, and there was a van there that day across the Gladys Park. So, I came out to look at the balcony, and I seen Afro-American female running, and when she was apprehended, I seen some unnecessary excessive force conducted by LAPD. I'm only here today because I never witnessed a woman being treated by that abuse so thoroughly and so abusive by the police department. It seemed like they were trying to send a message by using her as example. They allowed her to get up two or three times. They even allowed her to run across the street and tripped her down. And this event went on for about anywhere from five to eight minutes. It took, the woman weighed very little. She looked like she needed more mental help than anything. The most that she could have had, if she had anything, would have been a $20 rock, maybe 10. If the officers reported the incident based upon the stop and search procedure of the Fourth Amendment, perhaps if they, she went to trial on that particular incident and they reported the incident correctly, and she filed a 1538.5, she could have been dismissed upon illegal search and seizure.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Dogon is our next speaker, and then Steve Diaz will be after that, and then Jay Thomas.
General Dogon, Los Angeles Community Action Network, downtown Skid Row. June 3rd, around 1 o'clock, LAPD, four white male officers, beat the hell out of an 85-pound old black woman. The next day, June 5th, on the same street, 50-year-old black man was also beat up, you know, and arrested for no reason of all. The film coverage, you got LAPD cameras on the street. LAPD refused to give up footage. They're claiming the cameras are not working. The people in the community are in outrage. Today, right now, I just left Skid Row, and LAPD officers are riding around, mad-dogging people, looking at people crazy, jacking up folks for no reason of all. And this is in light of the MacArthur Park incident, you know, LAPD haven't learned nothing, because this is a pattern of abuse. This is this is how they get down. This is the way LAPD operates. It's always been like this, and until we get rid of folks like Bratton, it's always going to be like this. LAPD is directly responsible for all the major riots that happened in LA, and they're going to be responsible for the next one that happened in LA, because it don't seem like City Council members, look at it, y'all ain't even paying attention to what the hell I'm saying.
Our next speaker is Steve Diaz. Thank you, sir. Steve, sir, I'll warn you once. There's a, our remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole. Personal impertinent and duly repetitive slanders and profane remarks are prohibited, so consider yourself warned. Mr. Diaz is our next speaker.
Yes, my name is Steve Diaz, and I'm here today representing the Los Angeles Community Action Network. After May 1st, Chief Bratton announced several command changes, of which Central Division leadership was promoted to commanding staff, and additional staff was promoted to central area captain. Since '06, Centrator leadership has concentrated in arresting over 6,000 people in Central City East and has additionally ticketed over 6,000 people. Recently, the African-American female was beaten through by Central Division officers. This clearly shows a lack of leadership and clearly shows how abuse is rewarded by the Los Angeles Police Department if officers such as Central Division leadership are rewarded with promotions. This clearly shows lack of leadership by Chief Bratton. This also clearly shows how the institution as a whole has flaws, and we must fire Chief Bratton, and we also must reform the institution and really give people control over the institution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jay Thomas. After that, we'll go to Miriam Fogler and Van Nuys.
Good morning. My name is Jay Thomas, and I represent the Los Angeles Community Action Network, and I'm also a current member of VFW, which is Veterans of Foreign War. Unfortunately, I did two campaigns out here for that flag. I don't know why. But what I'm here today is to bring you a simple, toned-out message because of May 1st, because of my people, my community, getting beat down by the lapdogs that call themselves LAPD. Check this out. Either the City Council, Bratton, the council members get this together, or look at me as a good housekeeping seal with a blatant guarantee, we will do it for you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Miriam Fogler and Van Nuys. After that, we'll come back to Walter Bechtel here in Chalmers.
We're having difficult technicals problem down here, and I'll tell you, I go for the LAPD 1,000%, even though I know that they're only human beings. We all have to work together. Like I said earlier, what we need to do is have every officer evaluate himself and see what he is at in his life or her life, and, you know, and not be under scrutiny, because this is their job. Their job is to protect our society from the criminal elements, terrorist elements, and we have to be on the alert, too, the citizens. We must be armed and ready, too, and exercise the Second Amendment with prudence and care and love from God, because the idea is, it's not the idea, it's from God, period, that we are here to serve God, and that's what the police officers are here to do. And if they do something wrong, then there should be a good body of people with good ethics, good moralities.
If I can ask you to conclude, we're doing one minute per speaker.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much, Miriam. Walter Bechtel is our next speaker, and then Summer Reese will be next after that.
Okay. I just wanted to say, last time I was here, seven months ago, I went before the police commission, and I had some complaints to make about Newton Division. I was told to talk to the Assistant Chief Carter. I'm happy he's been removed because he never answered my emails, but I was also told to talk to the investigative detective over the police commission, and he told me he was going to contact me later, too. He hasn't contacted me either. And now, we're told that the replacement officer for Mr. Carter is Officer Diaz. I'm very concerned about who this might be. If this is the same Diaz who was under investigation for unwarranted arrests and illegal wiretapping, we're getting out of the fire and into the frying pan here. Okay? Because it doesn't seem to be that we're resolving the situation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bechtel. Summer Reese is our next speaker. After that is Arnold Sachs.
Good morning, council members. A, I think you should have two minutes on a subject this important when you take two minutes on more pedantic matters earlier in the morning. Many of you already know that I've been here several times to complain, because I was one of the people brutally assaulted by the LAPD on May 1st, hit in the stomach, severely injured, an hour before they started shooting at us and firing on our children. And I feel that incident's been completely lost in all these public discussions, that we were assaulted brutally by the police well before they started firing on the crowds, and that some of the anger generated within the crowd might have been because of the unwarranted assault on peaceful protesters who were gathered, you know, to assemble there. I think, you know, Chief Bratton should be fired, should step down, or should otherwise be removed from office. I think it's disgusting that you're trying to displace blame onto anonymous agitators and so-called anarchists when the police are fully responsible for their actions, the mayor's policies. These were policy and procedure decisions to come in and fire on innocent civilians and their children and their families to injure. My son is still talking about becoming a judge so he can put the bad cops in jail. This is a month later. My mother is still injured. I am still injured, and I'm disgusted by what's going on. I spoke to my friendly neighborhood FBI agent last week, and I feel they are investigating and interrogating victims rather than the appropriate targets in their investigation, which is the rogue and criminal Los Angeles Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker, and then Michael Carrion.
Good afternoon again, council members. Very interesting. My grave concern regarding the testimony was from the assistant, who happened to mention the use of police intelligence in the parade on May 1st, that they had people infiltrate the organization that had applied for the permit. This is very spooky for the public to know that they can be infiltrated like that. Big problems. Listen, when the State Supreme Court allows hearings for police officers to be held in private, that they overturn the San Diego, I believe it was a newspaper in San Diego's court case, asking for full disclosure when police officers are reprimanded. As long as that kind of attitude exists, anything that follows will exist along the same chain of thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Our last speaker is Michael Carrion.
Thank you. I made my comments before. I'll make them again. This is a culture. This is something that's been going on in this community for years. Okay? It starts, I'd like to first say thank you to Chief Parks, or Councilman Parks, for not responding to Chief Bratton's comments about that's your problem. That's the kind of leadership we need, not the point-finger leadership that we have here. That's the kind of attitude that breeds in the police department, and when they go out to the streets, they treat the public like that. Chief Bratton's treating your councilman like this. How do you think the people under him are treating us? It doesn't take a rocket scientist. It starts here. If you do not do any, if you do not condone it and condemn it, I mean, if you don't condemn it, you condone it. You people sitting in this horseshoe have a right to do something about it. If you don't, it's your fault. Go to sleep at night saying you didn't do nothing about it. Chief Bratton has done something about it. He's ruined this city. He's tarnished the name of LA.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. That closes our second public hearing as asked for by Mr. Reyes and as approved by the council. We'll return to Mr. Reyes, and then we'll hear from Mr. Weiss. Then we have Mr. Parks, Mr. Zein, and Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Council President. This is a process that's going to take some time. We put together a task force to address much of the detail and issues of approach, what steps we'll take, and there'll be an opportunity for us to have that give and take as we go through our efforts to reestablish that level of confidence, that level of trust, that I know we can gain once we understand the real notion of accountability. The task force in of itself will provide us that detailed give and take. But I need to remind you, ourselves, the fire police, the city family, that once this is over, we must be intact as a city. As a community, we will have to be able to continue enhancing our quality of life, but more importantly, we'll have to continue to work together to address all the ills and all the challenges we have. When you have poverty, high dense areas, when you have crime, and for that reason, I hope we can continue this dialogue in a constructive fashion that will reach our goal, which is to make this community whole, because when it's all said and done, I'll still be the council member of the MacArthur Park area at Westlake, and I will be looking to you for your support in making those positive constructive changes. So, thank you, Council President, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Our co-chair of the task force, Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I want to second what Mr. Reyes just said. It is, and I think it was extraordinarily well said, and you've said this for the entire month and a half, Mr. Reyes. It is important to remember that this is about the city, and it's about public confidence in the great men and women who served this city in uniform. And I very much appreciate what they do. I very much, I appreciate the LAPD today even more than I did on April 30, because in the face of this issue, in the face of these investigations, the LAPD has continued to act professionally and diligently to provide for public safety and security in this city, and I very much appreciate how forthcoming the leadership of the department has been in addressing the issue, in ensuring that full, thorough investigations have gone on, and I very much appreciate, Chief, that you have come back here today. Frankly, I was one of the few who voted and said we did not need to have this session today, but you are back here today. I thank you for that. I appreciate the manner in which you have personally addressed this issue on a daily basis since it happened, and I look forward to continue to work with Mr. Reyes and the other members of the task force to provide the closure to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Parks, Mr. Zein is after that, and Mr. Rosendahl after that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I get to my question, I would just like to ask Mr. Zein, because he made such a point on the original motion, and then also the last day when we continued it about who he would like to have here, and see if the complement is here at this time before we start the questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. There was an original motion made on this matter that the police commission would be represented here, and that original motion, which was made over a month ago, I then stood up and there was amendment to that motion, that we would like to have the individual or individuals in command, the incident commander, those individuals here to answer the questions regarding the situation on May 1st, and that motion passed. We've since made additional requests that, in addition to Chief Bratton and his command staff, that the individuals that were at that scene in command be here to answer some of the questions that we have regarding the situation on May 1st, orders that were given, directions that were followed or not followed, and answer questions pertinent to that. That request has been made a number of times, and I understand that, looking at the individuals from the police department that are here, those individuals are not present, and we've made that request formally, we've made that request informally, and I think if we want to be transparent and be open with this, we need to find out the state of mind of those individuals that were in command and the situation that took place, and while we see the videotape, we don't know what the state of mind is of the individuals that were in command, incident commander and the command staff. We've read it in the press, but we haven't heard from them, and I think it's appropriate, if we want to be transparent, that we have those individuals here to answer some of the questions and their state of mind and what they did and why they did it, and the situation that took place, so we can get it resolved, so the chief of police and his command staff doesn't have to keep coming before this body and answering these questions. I know this has been the second time, the last time we were here, three hours discussing it, and I don't know how long we're in discuss it, but in all due respect to Chief Bratton and his command staff, we need the people at this table who were at that scene, who gave orders, who gave direction, who gave command, and I'm not looking at the police officers on the line, the skirmish line. I'm looking at the individuals who decided, let's declare this an unlawful assembly, and let's follow through with that. That was the original, from the original motion, which passed unanimously, and there's been subsequent requests in addition to the last time we were here, that those individuals show up so we can ask. They're members of the department and command structure. There's captain, there's commander, there's a former deputy chief who's no longer, I understand, he retired, but there's still other members of the department that we could ask questions as far as what happened, why did it happen, and what was your state of mind, why did it happen this, the way it happened. That's what we're looking for. So, all due respect to Chief Bratton, his command staff, the individuals who are here, as I understand, were not there at that time, did not give the orders or directions, so that was the request, and again, I don't see them here in the audience, so I would request respectfully that those individuals be here, and if they're not here, then we continue this matter, so they can be here so we can ask these questions. That was the issue. Thank you.
Mr. Parks?
Let me ask if Chief Bratton could come up and comment on whether that staff is available.
They are not.
I didn't, I didn't hear you. You said what?
They are not available.
They're not present, not available? Have they been asked not to be here?
They're not present, and I believe they're not available.
Okay. Could we get an idea when they would be available?
At the conclusion of my investigations and the investigations into their actions. If they are, as you're aware, they're protected under the Police Office Bill of Rights, if they want to appear before you, represented by council, that would be their decision, their choice. But right now, we are investigating this matter, and they are subject of that investigation.
Okay. The issue is, have they been given the information, the council asked them to be here, and they refused? Is that what you're telling us?
That I don't know.
Okay. Who wouldn't know that? Because that was a direction from the motion.
If this direction, has there been?
I'm not aware of a formal motion asking that they be here.
If we, I believe that we can look at the record. If that's been part of it, if we could communicate that within the department, then we can have official word back, and we can do this by the book, if there either is availability or not. I think that would probably be the best way forward, and if you don't have any direct communication, we can include that from council.
From my understanding, Mr. Zein made the verbal motion, and we approved it and made that direction.
This, the motion was made when?
I'll ask the clerk's office to get a record of that, too.
When the original motion was made, the question was police commission, and I stated at that time, with all due respect to police commission, we need the incident commander and the command staff that was there to give the orders at that particular time, and that was approved by this body. And since there have been additional requests to have those individuals come before this body so we can answer those questions, it was never been refuted by this council, and again, with all due respect to Chief Bratton and his command staff, they were not there. The state of mind of the individuals who were there, that's what we need to examine, we need to explore. So, I would respectfully request that we continue this matter and not put the chief through another ordeal until we get those individuals here so we can continue it with the proper format, with the individuals we want to ask questions.
Colleagues, the city clerk, I've asked them to look at that record. There's no formal motion. There was discussion around that, but to make a formal motion, I'll just remind people, you need to say, "I move to direct," whatever it is, and that's taken up, and if the council agrees upon it, that would be part of the formal motion. The only formal motions we had were Mr. Weisar's motion and Mr. Reyes's motion.
Well, there was amendment to that motion, which passed unanimously in this body, that we'd have the command staff here. That motion was a verbal motion, and this whole body approved it and passed it, and that was over a month ago.
We're getting that file right now, so we'll have a resolution on that.
There's any misunderstanding. If anyone does not remember that, I think it was a very clear direction that we wanted to have the command staff here.
Mr. Zein, you may want to comment on last Wednesday, what your comments were when we took a recess on this item.
Okay. We're going to get that file, colleagues. If we can hold that one question on the desk, we're going to get the file down right now, and if it's necessary to do something formally, I'm relying on the city clerk's office for this, where the formal record is housed. We'll get that, and they're going to bring the file down. We'll make sure.
It was also mentioned last Wednesday when we recessed. For this Wednesday, that again was mentioned by me, that we'd have those individuals in charge at the scene come before this body. That has been mentioned many times.
I don't remember that in a formal motion.
Okay.
It was a formal motion. It's an amendment, an amendment to Mr. Reyes's motion.
Okay. It's Mr. Zein's time. Mr. Rosendahl is going to be next. It's Mr. Zein's time. We will come back, colleagues, to the record on this. Don't worry. And if Mr. Zein is done, Mr. Rosendahl, you are the next speaker, to be followed by Mr. Weisar. After that is Mr. Cardenas and Ms. Gruhl. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Morning, Chief.
Good morning.
One of the public speakers got up and said, "An hour before the police took the action, the street was being cleared because they didn't have a permit to be on the street." But when I went behind and spoke to her about her mother and her son, the police took a rather aggressive positioning of moving them off the street. They actually hit her with a baton. Do you have any, now, have you have any investigation on that particular set of issues of clearing the street prior to the other order regarding the park?
If you recall, council member, last week in the presentation that Chief McDonald gave, there was a series of videos showing the effort made to clear Wilshire at Parkview. That was the incident which the motorcycle officer was knocked off his motorcycle. Again, that was a decision made by the leadership at the scene at that time, that leadership being Chief Carter, Commander Gray, and the captain, that was the incident commander. There was a decision made after that initial effort to actually let them occupy the street after the initial effort to clear the street.
When you said about the incident itself, that the chain of command was out of control or broke down or whatever that, do you remember your phrase on that?
There were failures of leadership by that chain of command. That's correct, by the leadership that was there.
Yeah, and obviously, you're taking quick action on that, and I certainly appreciate the quick action you're taking. But my second question is this. The decision that they made to call it an unlawful demonstration, when the demonstration was lawful, except there were these agitators. I was in the Park in Chicago in 1968 and watched the heads getting cracked by the police then, and that was a big issue at the Democratic Convention in 1968 in Chicago. I've been in a lot of demonstrations in my life, because this is part of the democracy, is speaking your mind. It's one of the best parts of the democracy, frankly, is people's ability to get up and speak their mind. This May Day event, I actually spoke when they were out here at City Hall. I got out there and I spoke in behalf of the issue, and I noticed there were in the crowds some of these agitators. They've been around since 1968, people with a different point of view, who like to provoke the police, who like to create chaos, that like to make things unruly and cause police reaction. It's been around. We've all been around. We have the best academy in the world. Those tactics about agitators are discussed in those classes and are worked on. Where my puzzlement is this. This went on for 29 minutes. Am I right about that?
If you're referring to the series of events that Chief McDonald presented in his PowerPoint from the point in time when the police began to clear the park, that was a timeframe of approximately 29 minutes that we referenced in catalog, if you will.
Right. Now, you have BlackBerrys, you have cell phones, you have all these other things. Were you aware of that 29 minutes as those 29 minutes were going on and they were clearing the park?
I was not.
You were not aware?
That's correct.
They did not call the chief and tell you that they were clearing the park?
That's correct.
Okay. That's terrible to hear that. But the second issue is this. The chain of command, I certainly am 100% with you on what you're doing, and I think from day one, as I mentioned, you were totally forthwith, forthcoming, you were not playing any games, you were looking into the matter. I admire that a lot. The officers on the ground, as they formed that phalanx, as we saw that diagram going, those officers started to move people around. We saw on video journalists being pushed down. Now, the rank-and-file officer, when he's told to clear a park, does that mean that no matter who's no matter who's sitting there, mother may be nursing her baby, or a journalist doing his business, you have just push him out even if it means using, you know, a gun or using a baton or something? Is that part of how you do it?
Let me have Chief Hillman, who is our top person, if you will, on this, that explain what they are taught and what some of our issues of concern were at the MacArthur Park event.
The answer to your question, councilman, is no, that's not what they're taught. They're taught to use a reasonable application of force based upon the circumstances. If there is a lawful direction to someone that is told to do something and it falls within the purview of what the officer is entitled to do, such as step back or to move out of the area, that could be construed as a lawful direction. Now, someone that refuses to comply to that, there is a reasonable, objectively reasonable standard that we use to deal with that. Now, individuals that would be of no combative or aggressive type of behavior to the officers, the officers would not be able to use, under the law, under the policy of the department, the baton to use as what we refer to as an impact weapon. Now, the baton is used to gain compliance, to push individuals that would be refusing to obey a lawful direction. That's the best response I can give.
So in fact, the officers on the ground did not perform within the policy of how one is to clear a park?
That's what the investigation is attempting to determine, so did some officers not comply with the policies, procedures and training, as well as the instructions they were given that evening?
Which, to me, I mean, the chain of command, I certainly believe in what you're doing with the senior officers who were involved in making the decision to call it an unlawful assembly, and I question the judgment they used, as I'm sure your investigation is looking into, about calling it an unlawful event at that point. But the bigger issue for me at this point, in this moment, in this discussion, is the rank and file officers that some people have said to me, video shows it, were totally out of control. Could that be something that you've got a dozen of these officers, you're talking to them and saying, what got into you that made you take that journalist in the suit and tie with the light there and push him aside, or take the mother that was just there as part of, you know, 90% of these people were part of a real demonstration of a democracy, and pushing those people aside? Have the investigation so far asked those questions? What did you learn in the academy and why did you act that way?
That's a question I would have, councilman, absolutely. And again, we do not have all the facts, as the chief has indicated, he is looking at this, and we are looking at it very carefully. One of the issues that I'm most concerned about is the expectations are, we expect our police officers to treat people with respect and fairly, under the circumstances that they are faced with. And if, in the scenario that you portrayed, I have issues as a command officer of the organization as to why we did what we did.
And that, again, is the candor that I am most appreciative, because you're not saying, oh, well, they were doing what they were told to do. They weren't told to crack heads and do that kind of action unless they were provoked to do that, right?
The training that we provide our officers does not include using any type of force application that is not reasonable under the circumstances to be able to effect arrest, overcome resistance or to gain compliance. And in my time within this organization, I have never heard anyone to go out here and to say, "crack heads." That's not the way we were trained.
And you see, this is where when Mr. Reyes, my colleague, talks about absolutely being there after this is all over, to get the faith back into the police, so that we aren't afraid of our officers, that they're going to just slam us down for no reason, we need to see some kind of action that gives us that comfort level. So my next question is, what lessons learned so we don't see a rank and file officer get out of control, go against policy, even that directive that they went against, and do such brutal acts that are totally unacceptable?
You might speak to your responsibilities, Michael.
The responsibilities that the chief has just given me is to stand up a new organization, which specifically, I'm going to be accountable to the chief to ensure that the training that we're going to be delivering to all of our command officers, all of our supervisors, our mid-level managers, all the way down to the lowest level police officer, is going to include certainly reinforcing the individual accountability and what the law and what the policy is, and then how we treat people with respect. In the morning of May the first, there was approximately 10,000 people that gathered, that there apparently were no issues, and that there were no issues involving any type of force application. And it is important that we, as staff and command personnel, and myself in particular, I've got a pretty significant charter here to go back and to reach out to the entire organization and make sure that those issues are reinforced right down to the lowest level.
You know, my respect for you is great. When Augustine Contreras was gunned down in that Venice parking lot, you were on the scene, and you led the search for what looked like might have been the assailant. You did a great job, and the community was very grateful for your leadership that you showed. But here's what I want out of this, I want best practices learned, number one. Number two, I want to see a training module in the academy for all rank and file officers and for all cadets that deal with these kinds of situations. No officer, we give them the gun, we give them the baton, we give them our power to do what they must do in the law. We don't want to see an officer get out of control. Officers were out of control, beating people senselessly for no reason whatsoever, and I don't want to ever see it happen again in this city, ever. Can you get those modules together and give us a sense of comfort that we're going to put our officers through that kind of program?
The chief has put me in charge of training group. I have just now assumed that entire responsibility, which is a good fit for what I'm attempting to do. This is my last year, I want to be able to take-
That's a shame.
And develop, and develop a program as to where, all the way through the organization, we have a clear understanding of what it takes to be able to deal with these types of incidents, what it takes on the part of individual officers, the planning, preparation, execution of it, force application, and I firmly believe that, I'm excited about it, it's something that the chief has shown confidence in me to be able to try to move forward. Now, I can tell you this much, I'm going to be at every major event within the next year.
And the most important part for me will be the training module that gives these officers an appreciation that when you're asked to move a crowd out of a park, you just don't whip out the baton or get that, you know, whatever bullets they were shooting, and just run over the press and run over the people who are innocent in this democracy.
And that particular process is already in place, councilman, we're working on it right now, as we sit here.
And chief, one more question for you. In the future, when an order is given that there is an unlawful, and officers then are put in a position to have to do something that could lead to this, that you get the phone call not 29 minutes later, but right then and there, and that your chain of command becomes more responsive to you, so that you're brought in the loop as quickly as possible?
I think that message has been received loud and clear by my command staff as a result of the actions that I took several days after the event relative to the leadership at that event. There was, as we've already indicated, a significant breakdown in the flow of communications up and down the chain of command, and I think we've fixed that problem.
Great. Well, thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Per the earlier ask of the council in terms of the formal request be given to the officers who were involved, we have made that a formal request, colleagues. We should also refer that back to the task force, though, which is going to be having its next meeting next week, and in consultation with the chairs of the task force, they will take that up. Whether those officers, under the Police Officers' Bill of Rights or not, decide to exercise that right, not to, you testified, that is their right. But we, again, are still checking on the record so we can have that formal, but if there's no objection, that formal request has been made to the police department, that will be passed on through the command staff, and we will get an answer back directly from those individuals, okay? Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And as a member of the task force, I still have a number of questions that I will continue to raise at those meetings, but right now, all I have is a procedural question. Mr. President, last week, I introduced a motion to continue this item so that the task force could conduct its work, have more hearings in the community, ask more questions, oversee the investigations, with a 30-day status report to the full council to update not only the council but the public. If they cannot make those task force meetings, would I have to make that motion formally again, or is that motion already in place?
We adopted, the city clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we adopted that that report will come back here, the work of the task force will continue, and the agendas are in the hands of the two chairs there, so any of the items we're discussing here can be taken up by then.
But my question is, there was some confusion as to the motion that Zine and Parks brought up last week, whether that superseded mine or not. Do I have to formally make that motion, or that motion passed?
That motion did pass, absolutely.
Okay. And so the 30 days started last Wednesday. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Gruel is next, and then Ms. Hahn.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And although I was here for most of the presentation last time, I did not get to ask questions. So I did watch the tapes, I'll try not to repeat any of those questions. I do have a kind of a policy, a question, because I think that clearly, we all recognize, the police department recognizes, the Police Protective League recognizes, the community clearly recognizes that something went wrong that day. And our efforts now is to ensure that that never happens again, which I think Mr. Rosendahl expressed as well, and to ensure that the steps we now take in the future are, one, that we'll have structural change, and two, that there are ongoing, as you mentioned, investigations that are occurring, and I don't see the, I do see our city attorney here, but city attorneys that are here that could also advise. I sensed from what I listened to last week, that some of the questions that were asked, the responses related to, it's in the middle of the investigation, they have their representation, et cetera. Are there items in which questions that we've asked last week that can't be answered during the middle of the investigation? Because I think some of the questions Mr. Zine would like to ask and others, I want to know, is it appropriate at this time from the city attorney that we can ask those questions or get those questions answered? Do you?
If I could just jump in regarding the city attorney's viewpoint, there still are investigations, and it is a personnel, there are personnel matters, so the answers to those questions in open session could be problematic and premature.
Okay. Because I think in some of those, we do want those questions answered, but where we need to ask those questions, because I don't want the public to feel, I mean, transparency to me is critically important as part of this process, that everyone out there wants to know what we're going to do differently, what went wrong, and how we change that. It may be some of those discussions happen today, next week, or afterwards, I don't know. And I think we need a clear roadmap from the city attorney's office and LAPD at some point that says what we can and cannot discuss, so that the public doesn't feel we're hiding something. That's very important to me, to ensure, and the accountability as well.
I might be able to help you with that, council member, that I've charged Jerry Chalif and Chief Hillman to produce the public report that will seek to answer the many questions that are being raised here, some of which we cannot answer because we just don't have the answers at this time, that's what the various investigations are hoping to determine. That public report will also be vetted by the city attorney's office to ensure that we are not in anything that we're issuing to the public, stepping on the limitations that various, whether it be Police Officer Bill of Rights, Charter, Constitutional Rights, or whatever, that, you know, information that we're not able to provide in that type of report. So that report is intended to take elements from all of the investigations that are underway-
Hold my time.
And give a public report to police commission, to the council, and to the public.
And I think that if you could just refresh everyone's memory and the public, I think there are five separate reports that are going forward in our task force, but what the timing is on each of those reports?
There is a after-action report that Chief Patient is responsible for, that is currently being worked on. Some elements of that, it was included in the presentation that Chief McDonald gave to you last week. Many elements of that report will not be made public, that it is not the practice to make those reports available to the public, and again, will be guided by the legal limitations and restrictions we may have to operate under. There's a second investigation, which is the use of force investigations by a professional standards bureau, the Internal Affairs Investigation. Many of those matters are certainly not going to be, the intimacies of those are not able to be made available to the public because of, they are personnel actions in many respects, and oftentimes, we are not at liberty to divulge certain of those findings, if you will. That is a lengthy process, it's defined by city charter, by state law, and by the consent decree guidelines. And we have also a series of investigations into the actions of some of the individuals that were assaulting police officers during that event. Those investigations are continuing with no specific timetable for conclusion of that, that's the effort being made to identify those that were assaulting the officers. We are cooperating fully with the FBI in terms of their preliminary view as to whether there are any civil rights violations contained within the actions that occurred in MacArthur Park on that day. And there is a fifth review that is intended to keep track of a metrics of the various lawsuits and federal actions that are being taken as a result of the MacArthur Park incident. Mr. Chalif, his risk management office, which works closely with the city attorney's office on that matter, is responsible for that aspect of it. And lastly, there is the report that I mentioned, which would be the public report to the police commission, and that's the one shared by Mr. Chalif and Chief Hillman. And there is finally the inspector general's report for the police commission, which will be his review of all of those investigations. And he, as is the practice of the inspector general, will issue a separate report to the police commission, and that report will, in conformity with past practice, be a public report, most, most of it, other than things that might have to be construed as personnel actions.
And I'm going to ask a variety of questions that, again, may, just maybe, coming back to the task force, that my two colleagues and I sit on to answer some of these questions in changing things, because I know you may not have all the answers today. One clearly is the aspect of dealing with the media, which I know there's been some movement on as well, training for the officers. Two, it is about the dispersal order and how that's communicated. And I think what I've heard is also about training and ensuring that depending upon the crowd, that it is in both English and Spanish, that there's, as we heard, the helicopter, the wrong helicopter was there, sound trucks, all of those things, that that will also be something you will be looking at.
That's all within the purview of Chief Hillman, his new area of responsibility, and we've recently put the department's training academy under his control to expedite and facilitate that identification of training needs and the actual implementation of the training.
And I know one of the other issues that we heard on the video last week as well was a continual comment about, get back in line, stay in line, and everything that I've ever seen over the years has been, it's a very, you know, distinct line moving at the same time, and that, was that not really within policy, that it was kind of separate? I know we did not have as many officers there for a variety of reasons, again, something you're looking at, that there were only a certain number, but they seemed to not stay in that distinct line, so that there was confusion as to who was in front and behind.
Chief Hillman, you can speak to that, please.
The lines that you're referring to, we use as kind of a control line, and you're absolutely correct, council member, in terms of, there were some disjointed and some control lines that were not perfectly clear, and the reasons are several for that type of a situation. Number one is what's going on that may slow down the events of the rest of the line, number two, the number of people that would be there, and number three, just exactly what they're trying to accomplish in being able to move through the park. Oftentimes, in a perfect world, the lines should be straight across, but in some cases, it will not be straight across because of the topography, moving around, various things, and, for example, some group may have to stop and talk to people and deal with whatever issues are in front of them.
And sometimes then you have lines behind them, I mean, there are, again, it just seemed like there was not enough officers within that area to respond to some of the challenges that they were facing, which caused them to do some things which we don't all agree with here.
Well, I think that we're, at least from the perspective that in the department's report that we're looking at, those are some issues that I want to be able to have answered, but also, we have to take a look at the resources that we do have, and how do we best utilize those resources? There is a training doctrine that is currently out there that calls for officers being online- officers being online, have officers that are in a, almost a T-formation behind that, that provides support to those lines. So those are some things that we're looking at.
And I think, as the chief mentioned earlier, the communication problem was clear as we watched the video last week and as you provided the report, Chief McDonnell. And again, I'm looking forward to our task force meeting, I believe it's next week, or we have three or four other committee meetings that will occur, where we can delve into some additional issues at that level. Is there, have there been any changes in the officers that were there, moved to other sites, or just the two, or other divisions, other than the two commanding officers that were removed? There's not been any other personnel changes?
Personnel changes.
Okay, in that area. I think, colleagues, and I know I'm a little bit over, but since I didn't get to ask questions last week, I'm going to take a little prerogative to speak a little over time. I think that we want to ensure that the public does have the relationship with LAPD, and it's been challenged clearly from this last incident. And I think all of us in this room want to make sure that the community and LAPD can work together. And that's our ultimate goal, and to make sure that we have the structure in place, and the training in place. As we've mentioned, we've tried to get a lot of officers out on the street, and have not had maybe the appropriate training for these officers, and they're put in situations that they've not been trained for. And so, we want to hear what we can do differently as elected officials, what the LAPD will do differently to ensure that the public has confidence, and for those individuals who were traumatized by this event, for them to, as the gentleman said here, accountability, that they know that whatever happens, because there are certain things, rogue cops or rogue staff that you have, whatever it is, that people are going to do things that we don't have control over, but you want to know that there's going to be accountability, and that there will be some ramifications at the end for that. And I think that's what we all want to see here, and I think those in the LAPD want to see as well. So I do encourage, and Mr. Garcetti, and maybe you can do this, I mean, the motion that was introduced to create the task force, the purpose of that is to, the reason we wanted to hear this, I think, on May 30th was not to wait, because the public is continuing to ask us, what are you doing, what have you done, how are you going to change things, how we hold people accountable. And so that May 30th date was an opportunity for us to hear that preliminary report, and I think, again, preliminary is a key word here. But that the task force was supposed to have both a review with the community there, and LAPD being present. And we look forward to those somewhat longer meetings, evening meetings, where the public can participate as well.
Absolutely. And I would just reiterate that as well, colleagues, the task force exists for the heavy lifting. This is a check-in, all is not to be resolved here, the heavy lifting, that the members of the task force and our two chairs direct, that's why we have committees, it's why we have the task force as well, but we appreciate this check-in.
And just in closing, the last comment, I mean, that was the reason, the first hearing that we held, it really was about hearing from the public, because LAPD was literally, it was, you know, a couple of weeks later, was just finding out some of the answers. And so, it'll be a longer process than any of us would like, but it will be one that we can defend to the public, that we are doing what we can to make the changes within LAPD.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Appreciate those comments. Ms. Hahn is our next speaker.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, for me, I might share a little frustration with some of my other colleagues, that we felt last week was not exactly the kind of presentation or the kind of transparent communication and answers that we had hoped for. I mean, it was clear, Chief Braden, your first comments out of the box were pretty much, you were disappointed, you felt like there was a huge breakdown, things had gone badly, the mayor talked about sort of feeling sick at his stomach, I mean. And then last week, it felt to me more like your PowerPoint was kind of more trying to, it was kind of a bureaucratic attempt to sort of defend what had happened. Many of our questions were not answered last week. And I know none of my questions were answered last week. And you didn't say you weren't answering them because it was under investigation, you gave very rambling bureaucratic answers to some of my hard questions. So I'm a little disappointed. You started out really good, chief, in how you handled it, reassigned a commander, another commander, I guess, has retired. But last week was frustrating for me. And I understand, I mean, part of this, I think it should be in closed session, because I think there's some things that we deserve answers to, that I can understand in public, maybe at this time, it's not appropriate, because there certainly are going to be lawsuits. I think this is going to cost us a lot of money. And for me, the discussion today about, you know, the officers out there who were out of control, or certainly didn't, Chief Hillen, you said, that's not how we trained them, that's certainly not what they learn in the academy, and yet, clearly that was their actions. But I think the command staff certainly should never be let off the hook. I think even the commands that were given to disperse, I think the command to fire the less than lethal weapons was maybe premature. I asked a question, gee, is it ever right to fire one of those rubber bullets or whatever into someone's back? That was never answered. You know, when the crowd begins to disperse and is clearly turning and walking away, was that really appropriate for them to have still gotten shot? So, you know, I had a lot of those really tough questions, which were not answered. Here's what I want to know. I mean, I think the Police Protective League came out with some recommendations, I'd like you to comment on whether you think those are good recommendations in terms of training, in terms of how to prevent this from happening again. But I think the only way you prevent this from happening again is to really hold the officers accountable, the command staff, as well as the officers who are out there, accountable for what happened. If that's not how they were trained, and that's the behavior they, you know, they displayed, then are they going, I guess what I'm going to ask is, you know, should we expect some discipline to happen as a result of this? Is the inspector general going to review the cases of the officers who were involved to see whether or not there was a pattern in practice of them engaging in this kind of behavior anywhere else? And, you know, based on what we did, really yesterday, giving an almost unanimous vote to Senator Romero's bill, that we believe these disciplinary hearings, officers' names who are involved in this be made to the public, is this going to change how we move through this process? So will we be able to see some discipline? Will we be able to see some records of these officers being looked at to see whether or not they've engaged in this before? Because I'm all for training modules, I'm all for doing something different, I'm all for taking the PPL's recommendations, but, you know, something went wrong now. And we can't just kind of brush that off and say, well, in the future, we're going to train better, in the future, we're going to make sure this didn't happen before. Because clearly, we didn't learn our lessons from the Democratic National Convention in 2000. I think that's what bothers me. We didn't learn the lessons. I brought up Commander Gray, being the same commander that gave that order in 2000. So, to me, the only way we move forward is, yes, put in better training, but how can you assure us and the public that the command staff and the officers involved will be disciplined, will be investigated, and if we find anything in their records that shows that this is something that has happened in the past, what can we expect, and what can the public expect for holding these officers accountable?
You have a lot of questions there, and let me give you some answers.
Yes, and our next speaker after that will be Mr. Alakon, could for about two and a half minutes over on that. Go ahead.
The processes I just outlined for Councilmember Gruel are, I think, fairly comprehensive in terms of investigating what happened. What we're doing in the meantime, so that we don't have to wait till those investigations are done, the appointment of Chief Hillman to move forward as far as proactively. The disciplinary process is what it is, and it's prescribed by law, by the consent decree, by charter. I also, along with the mayor's support of the bill that Senator Romero's colleagues voted on, that the council yesterday voted to support, the issue of more transparency to the disciplinary process. And the inspector general reviews all of our disciplinary actions, so when we take matters before the police commission, he makes his comments, his recommendations, and our findings. So, in answer to all of your questions, the answer is that we are working in a very comprehensive, coordinated fashion, always operating within the limits of the laws and procedures we have to follow. And that we are not seeking to be circumspect, not seeking to be in denial. This was an extraordinarily serious event, and actions I could take immediately, the removal of the command staff involved. I believe I have the right to trust that my two-star chiefs will lead. And in the execution and adaptability that were exhibited in this case by the leadership team there was seriously flawed. And so, to ensure that that would not happen again, they would be moved from positions in which they could, in fact, command and control at a future time, at a future event. I have to have that comfort level that the leadership will not make some of the same mistakes that were made at MacArthur Park, which are quite obvious. And to that end, that's where the, even while we investigate more extensively, there was enough available, information available to me to make the moves that I made. And in terms of Chief Hillman, Chief Hillman's responsibility is to the best of our ability to try to train the command staff on what we're supposed to do, and also on adaptability. The idea is, the best-laid plans, you always have to be in a position to adapt to changing circumstances. And the adaptability to the changing circumstances in this event was seriously flawed, seriously flawed, and should not have occurred.
And do you have a chance to take a look at the Police Protective League's recommendations?
I'm going to have to go to Mr. Alakon after this.
I've already expressed publicly support for their recommendations, and in fact, everything they're looking for is effectively now within the purview of Chief Hillman.
Thank you. Mr. Alakon is next, and then Mr. Parks for a second time.
Yes. This issue is going to remain for quite a while. In fact, in any larger than a police department, you're going to have challenges on a continuous basis. It's a situation of constant improvement. And so, in that spirit, we will move forward and try to improve. But first of all, I just have an administrative question. Do we have any civil rights demonstrations planned in the near future? And if so, can we get a report well in advance of them, so that we know what's going on in not just our district, but citywide? Is there a way that we can get a list of those things?
Sure.
And do we have any events that are coming up that we should be-
There are a number of events. We police hundreds of these each year, and in terms of major events, that, well, big and small, they require permitting by the police commission. And so, the police commission is the entity that finally passes on and authorizes these. So, that communication, I think I can speak for them, the executive director of the police commission is right here. So, I'm not sure what their notification process is to the city council, but if there's not one already in place, I'm sure they can set it up fairly quickly.
Okay. And also, I think we should do some research or understanding, or have some understanding with regard to the people who are organizing the event. It seems to me that, in my, and I participate in many of these things, and, you know, that's probably why I'm here. But many, in the most peaceful events, where the events go off without a hitch, people express their civil rights, and nobody questions them whatsoever, and no violations of police policy occur, it seems to me that the organizers are also very organized, and have direct and continuous communications with the police department. And one of the things that concerns me about this particular event is not so much the organizers, because I think they were very well aware of the procedures and worked with the department, and some of the individuals at least had a history of working with the department. But some of the people who attended, some of the people that were attracted to this kind of event, might be the kind that we should have anticipated certain kinds of things from happening, that perhaps that was part of that so-called breakdown. One thing I wanted to reiterate, my concerns about the lessons learned from the Christopher Commission, and their focus on the culture of LAPD, and the potential that many officers, and they were named in that particular case, who had a history of repetitive violations of abusive force, or use of force, abusive force, either way, it works. But the point is that I didn't get a response last week that indicated to me whether or not we are going to be extrapolating information about the officers with regard to this notion out of the consent decree and the Christopher Commission, that there are individuals who may be part of a culture that is not consistent with training and the policies of the police department. And I'd like to know what we're doing to investigate this, not just from the perspective of a command breakdown, but were there individuals on the scene who might have fallen into the category of those who were targeted in the consent decree and the Christopher Commission actions of the last decade?
One of the major thrusts of the consent decree was to create a computerized system called Teams 2. There's a predecessor system, this largely paper, Teams, which is the personnel records, if you will. The Teams 2 system is a much more comprehensive one, bringing from in excess of 20 different sources, all information relative to an officer's work history, sick time, disciplinary issues, et cetera, into a computerized system, so that the system will flag early warning, if you will, red flag early warning, officers with established parameters who begin to exceed certain parameters that we would want to have an early warning, that there may be a problem there, and maybe seek to correct early on and identify a set of issues. That system is up and running as of the last month or so, that it is the hot, if you will, the engine of the consent decree, and it's taken quite a bit of time and quite a bit of money to create. And so, that system, which is coordinated with our risk management unit, will hopefully, over time, be able to identify officers who might be at risk. As to any officer who is identified as having used force, in this event, that force to the best of our ability, under the prescribed procedures, will be investigated. And if it is deemed to have been out of policy, inappropriate, that there are a number of review mechanisms that are done simultaneous with that to indicate, what is the officer's work history, what is his past record, is this a, as you would indicate, a term, a patent on the part of that officer. This is something that the police commission intimately reviews, and its inspector general along with the department. And it is a matter of attempting to identify officers who might have a propensity for use of force or inappropriate behavior.
I guess more specifically, will we know if any of the officers who were at the scene, or the multiplicity of scenes, on that day, are people who have been identified as reoccurring actors on use of force relative to Teams 2, Teams 1, or the consent decree, or any other document that seeks to identify those types of individuals?
If they are identified by a complainant, if they are identified by us, based on our review of the various materials we have, the complaints from citizens, the complaints that we might self-generate based on what we're reviewing on a videotape, those officers would certainly be, their work history would be looked at, that's part and parcel of what we do in each and every instance of use of force.
So we will be looking at them from the perspective of Teams 2?
That's correct.
And we will be looking at them from the perspective of the consent decree?
Teams 2 is in many respects shaped by the consent decree, that's correct.
And will we be able to get a report as to whether or not any of the officers who reacted in ways that might have been inappropriate, or in ways that have in fact been deemed inappropriate, whether or not they are sort of that, within that culture that was addressed in all the actions that I mentioned?
None of the officers will be identified by any, and information is protected under their police officer bill of rights.
Can we get a generic report?
That's correct, that's what we issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alakon. Mr. Cardenas?
The video that you showed last time, the presentation, showed some timelines of some activities, and a narrative was given as well. But one of the things that it left me with was an ambiguity- But one of the things that it left me with was a, an ambiguity about when the dispersal order was given. And secondly, whether or not the dispersal order was given in a fashion that was satisfactory or appropriate for the situation. Now, that being the case, what is, in a situation like that, the size of the crowd, the time of day, the incidents that were occurring, what would be the proper method of giving a dispersal order? For example, is one shout-out appropriate? Does it have to be done in a manner in which there's feedback from everybody saying, "I think everybody knows, we've asked them to disperse. Now we need to decide whether or not they're dispersing or not." And also whether or not it's adequate to just do it in one language or if there's knowledge that there's other languages primarily understood by the crowd, do those languages apply? And are we required to actually attempt to give the dispersal order in various languages?
I think it was quite clear, we have spoken to this, that one of our issues with the instructions that were given were that they were only given in English to the best of our understanding at this time and not in Spanish to what was a predominantly Latino audience, lest Chief Hillman to speak with some specificity to the appropriate procedures. But quite clearly, in this instance, as we have already indicated in the presentation you last week, major area of concern on our part is the comprehensiveness of the dispersal order, timeliness of it, coordination of it, and chain of command in terms of its utilization.
The chief has addressed some of the specifics, but first of all, when a dispersal order is given, we have to understand the reason for it. There is an assembly that the incident commander or someone charged with being able to assess the behavior that has risen to a level that it's unlawful. Now, the unlawful behavior itself, is it the body of the group or is it a select group of individuals and how big of an area does it encompass? So those are issues that have to be taken into account. But the dispersal order itself, if it's focused at a group of individuals, there is a standard format that is provided for the department that meets the specifics of the law for the state of California, that basically says, "I, as a police officer, peace officer for the state of California, police officer for the city of Los Angeles at all, declare this area," and it's required to define the area, not the entire city of Los Angeles, but the area that's specifically impacted by this unlawful behavior. And then there is an announcement that the individuals that would remain present would be subject to arrest and that potential force applications could occur. Now, the delivery of that particular message, depending upon the cultures that would be there, in this particular event, as part of the pre-planning process in the plan itself, because it was an immigration rights issue, that the plan had called for Spanish-speaking officers to be able to deliver an announcement. In a perfect world, the use of the amplified sound systems strategically positioned prior to the events occurring that would constitute the unlawful assembly, so that if some type of unlawful behavior took place, the contingency would be those sound trucks, those vehicles, those conveyances, those amplified systems would be able to announce a dispersal order based upon the unlawful behavior. Then there is a reasonable amount of time that is given to the individuals to start to indicate that they're dispersing along with routes for the groups to leave by. That's essentially the context of it, counsel.
So that's the context of it, but in this particular case, what you just described seemed to be very different than what...
That's correct. And that's what our concerns are, that the park, as you know, is actually two parks on either side of Wilshire. And there seems to have been considerable confusion as to who gave what orders when and for what specific purpose. And was that then conveyed to the park, to the crowd in a lawful manner? And then confusion as to, did the initial instructions mean one side of the park or did it mean the whole park? And it's those issues which are of great concern to me, because the senior personnel at charge of that event clearly understood that they had a group of agitators, 25 to 50, the number varies depending on what time and at what location in the park. But to have moved that group of agitators into the four, 3,000 to 4,000 people who were peacefully and permitted, at a permitted rally, those were serious command decisions that I believe were flawed, seriously flawed. And thus I made the changes in personnel that I made as quickly as I did. That should not have happened.
Now, what you just described tells me that even though on camera it was line officers that were marching through the crowd, et cetera, that caught a lot of people's attention. But what you just described is actually the preparation and activity and the awareness and the experienced officers that are in charge of the situation, correct? That they're supposed to be giving the dispersal order, deciding when it's given, deciding and implementing how they're going to give it, who's going to be giving it, at what broad spectrum will it be given? Should it be given on this side or that side? Or should they try to address it to a certain sector of the crowd? So it's the brass that are there on site, they are the ones in charge?
The two issues, as we described last week, sir, the command and control, which would be, in this case, it was two-star chief, commander, two captains, a number of lieutenants, sergeants that were directly involved in the command of the various squads. And the decision-making process they went through and then decisions, a lack of decisions that were made at various points in time during the movement to the park. Then at the individual officer level, and keep in mind that the officers were given an order to clear the park, so they were responding to an order from superior officers. But that does not excuse, if you will, each officer from having accountability for their individual actions as it relates to their use of force. They have to be in a position to, in any use of force, describe its necessity and its reasonableness. And so the investigation is multifaceted, looking at the command and control, what orders were given and their appropriateness, and then the use of force, what use of force was exhibited and was that lawful, reasonable, necessary.
Now, when it comes to the dispersal order, does that change the dynamic from a law enforcement perspective, a legal dynamic of what you do from that moment forward? Michael? For example, if you have a big crowd and the police officer interacting with them or what have you, coming in contact with them, it's my understanding that there is a difference once the order is clearly made to disperse?
Well, it isn't quite...
Like a standard of practice that isn't necessarily only confined to the city of LA, but a standard of practice across the board, that you are now in a different situation?
Well, what you have, the dispersal order is the second phase of the incident that has become unlawful. When the incident becomes unlawful, to put it in the simplest terms, the dispersal order is saying, what you're involved in as a group is that it's unlawful and that you are directed to leave. And the dispersal goes on to mention other things that we've talked about. Now, the dynamics of it at that particular point become situational dependent.
Sure.
If you have 150,000 people, or going back to the March 25th event where we have close to a million, being able to deliver a dispersal order in a particular area, what area are you asking to disperse? So there has to be a defined line and there has to be communication with the individuals that you have expectations of, that they understand. So the setup to this whole situation is, is it the facilitation of putting lines and barriers and dividing the lawful behavior from the unlawful behavior and then confining the declaration of the unlawful assembly announcement to those that are involved in unlawful activity? And then being able to encourage those individuals to leave through communications. And if they don't leave and they continue to remain present, then they're subject to arrest, and arrests are generally made. That's the best I can answer on that, counsel.
Now, I'd like to get a little clarity on, there seems to be two dynamics of the investigation. One is the command staff, who very likely were not making any physical contact with the individuals. I said very likely not. And then you have the actual police officers, line officers that actually made contact with individuals. Can you please explain for us, just generically, the different dynamics of investigation as far as the command staff and also the line officers? And the most egregious thing that I witnessed was when officers actually came in contact with the media and didn't seem to recognize the fact that they were media or ascertain any difference and actually used their batons on them, et cetera. Two different aspects of the investigation. And in addition to that, is it the same individuals or organizations or investigators or investigating both?
I'll go into that if you would, sir. As we talked about and laid out last week, we have a number of different components to this overall investigation. We've got the Professional Standards Bureau piece, which includes the Internal Affairs piece for any allegations of misconduct, including those that would address excessive force issues. We've got a force investigation piece if we determine that any of the use of force rose to the level of categorical use of force as dictated by the consent decree. We have the Office of Operations After Action Report, which will address then as one piece of that, the command and control issue, the leadership at scene, the calls that were made, the decisions they made and at what point to do the actions that were executed out there. That would be the most inclusive of the actual command and control piece. If there was found to be misconduct as a result of the command and control piece, that would then be addressed by the Internal Affairs piece as part of that. And looking at the uses of force, each one of those will be addressed as part of the overall Internal Affairs piece. The, I guess, the cumulative decisions that were made in the field as to how to deploy the officers who were out there, that'll be part of the after-action piece that's done by the Office of Operations. In addition, we have the investigation being done by Counterterrorism Bureau, looking at the other side, the agitators, what the assaults on the officers in cooperation with robbery homicide division. And then, as the chief mentioned, Risk Management Group is looking at the lawsuits that are coming in as a result of this, as well as the claims for damages.
Now, all of those investigative bodies or individuals, those are all within the city and specifically the police department?
Those are all within the police department. In addition, we have within the Police Commission, the Inspector General, which has an independent review. He has access to all of the information in any of our investigations within the department. And then, as mentioned earlier, the FBI has also got their own independent inquiry into what went on that day. And again, they have access to everything that we have.
So when you say they have access to everything, as they notify the department, the department in good timely manner needs to forward or cooperate, et cetera?
It's an ongoing relationship. They have a rapport going back and forth. Internal Affairs is routinely in contact with the FBI. The Inspector General is on a daily basis in contact with all elements of the investigation.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Perry? Okay. Mr. Parks? And then Mr. Sa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could you hold my time, because I just want to run through my list of questions?
All right. I will do my very best. If you're not speaking, I'll pause it.
Okay. Thank you. Chief, let me ask you, on dealing with, and I think a lot of emphasis has been put on what happened after the fact, could you walk us through what you have done as it relates to preparing the department for the May 1st event?
Actually, that responsibility would be under the Chief of Operations, Earl Payenger. I was briefed from time to time as to his preparations for that event along with Chief Carter. Both events were going to be contained within the boundaries of the Central Bureau of the City, both the downtown demonstration, which was central area, and the MacArthur Park rally, which was in the Rampart area. So for each of these events, in coordination with Special Operations Bureau Chief Repoly, after the Police Commission took their action to grant a parade and rally permit for the central area event and a rally permit for the MacArthur Park event in Rampart area, the department began working in coordination with various city agencies, traffic and the traffic people, et cetera, as well as the organizers of the different events. The effort was then made to move toward the production of a department incident plan for each event. And those incident plans are pretty much a structured document which outlines the activities to be engaged in, the personnel to be used, the responsibilities, et cetera. So again, this would all be under the overall purview of Chief of Operations, Earl Payenger. I was briefed from time to time by him and Chief Repoly and received final documents of both incident plans. Additionally, discussions were held with the mayor's office relative to the events in terms of, to keep the mayor's office apprised of our expectations, size of crowds, et cetera, personnel resources that we were going to provide, as well as the idea of ensuring that we would have adequate resources to deal with any of the contingencies that might arise.
The other thing I was wondering about, you mentioned earlier you weren't notified regarding, I guess, the unlawful assembly. What was the time lag between the unlawful assembly and your notification?
My first conversation with Chief Payenger was approximately, I think, about 6:45 in the evening. And the question of him was in fact, what was happening at MacArthur Park? Because there had been no BlackBerry messages, that we rely principally on the BlackBerry, which is a combination of text messaging and phones. And we have expended quite a few resources in the development of that system. And one of the failings in this event was the failure to move information up the chain of command as events were unfolding at MacArthur Park. So that in effect, the senior leadership of the department, Chief Payenger as chief of operations and myself as chief of department, were not being notified of events unfolding at MacArthur Park as they were unfolding.
Have you determined at this point who might have dropped the ball on that?
It's a number of factors involved, that we had a command center. Chief McDonald's presentation last week indicated that we had a department command center. There was a captain, the patrol captain from Rampart, Captain McDonald, who was liaisoning with Metro Resources. So part of our investigation will be to determine, the Metro liaison was monitoring Metro frequencies on which a lot of the conversations that you heard in the presentation last week between Metro offices, that was on Metro channels. There's also a command channel, that was the channel that Chief Carter, when you heard his aide on the air, he was working on a separate channel. So part of our investigation will be to determine where there are lapses in the communication between the various liaison, tracking the various radio channels that were being used for this event. Quite obviously, there were.
The other thing I was wondering about is that, could you give us a brief description of what you saw when you got to the scene? Was the event over? Was the crowd dispersed or just what were the conditions?
That's correct. I arrived at the scene at approximately 6:50, 6:55. And at that time, I arrived at Parkview and Sixth. And that was the, excuse me, I'm sorry, Parkview and Wilshire. And that was the, no, I'm going to apologize, we were at the other end of the park, Parkview and Sixth. And met there with Chief Payenger, who I had requested to respond to the scene, Chief Carter, Commander Gray, Captain Egan, and also Andre Barat arrived almost simultaneously, a short time thereafter with me, as well as Chief Perez from our Professional Standards Bureau. All of whom I had requested to respond to the scene for briefing. The event was in fact over, the crowd had been dispersed. Most of the remaining activity, which was some small groups of agitators, was occurring three to four blocks away from that location. At that location, there were a number of news media gathered. There were also a number of the principal organizers of the group who were there just talking with the news media.
Okay. The other thing I was wondering about, and this was, I think, one of the biggest surprises to me, is right after the event, there was public comments related in the newspaper about what was perceived to be a lack of training, particularly with Metro. And I was wondering, by this time, had you discovered why that training had lapsed or why they were not, from my understanding, is that they do that for a living? And so I was just trying to figure how did that...
They do. And we're in the process of expanding the number of offices in Metro that the platoons over the last several years, with our personnel shortages that have been depleted. As we've been expanding the size of the department, we're in the process of putting new resources into Metro, including additional supervisors, additional supervision. We recently added a second captain, for example, over there where they've always operated with just one. And the new training that is normally given to a number of those personnel had not yet been conducted. And the training of Metro had been in fact reduced from approximately two days a month to one day a month, that's training, that are specific training days in addition to the normal training they would receive.
Was that just an internal decision? Was that the captain level made that decision?
That's a combination of myself, Chief... That's a combination of myself, Chief Payenger, working down through Chief Repoly, Special Operations Bureau. Some of those decisions would have predated Chief Payenger, going back to Chief Gaskon, and also would have involved the commanding officer of Metro.
Okay. Also, I'd like you to give us a brief explanation. You mentioned creating a new position last time, and didn't really get an idea what that new position was going to be doing.
Are you referencing Chief Hillman?
Yes.
Chief Hillman, I think, is one of the most renowned experts in America, in American policing, on issues of crowd control, management, training, et cetera. And he is currently in the drop program. He has one year remaining in that program. And what we're seeking to do is maximize his skill set there in developing, over the next year, training, mentoring, if you will, for our command staff, as well as for our department personnel, all our department personnel in this area. That is his overall mission. To facilitate that mission, we have placed the department's Training Division under his control. And he will be coordinating his activities with the various entities in the department, Consent decree Bureau, that has a lot of consent decree training requirements, Operations, which has their own training requirements, the Academy. And the responsibility is multifaceted. He can speak with more specificity to them. He's also been charged with implementing a new incident command system that we have used recently at the MacArthur Fire with great success, as well as on the May 17 march. And instead of a territorial or geographical, territorial prerogative, the idea is to put our best people in charge of major events, so that we're, in fact, using our best people where appropriate. But Chief Hillman can speak with more specificity, if you will, other than the general outline I've given to that.
Before it goes to that, one thing I was wondering before he speaks, what I was under the impression, and I agree with you on the issue of his background and such, that, and also it was unique that he was elevated from captain to deputy chief because of those expertise. But my impression is the job he had before going to West Bureau was to use all those skills and expertise in these areas. And it seemed fairly close to the kinds of things you're now asking to do, with what he used to do, and I don't remember the name of the Special Operations Bureau or something like that. And I was just trying to get a sense of what's different from his old job and now his new job.
Quite a bit. His primary focus on this position will be on development of training, and will, at the direction and approval of myself and Chief of Operations, Earl Payenger, from time to time, be the officer in charge at some of our special events. So the Special Operations Bureau that he formerly commanded prior to his command of West Bureau was a largely operational role. This role is more significantly in the area of development and implementation of coordination of training throughout the department, but at the same time, from time to time, using his operational skills to directly command some of the special events, so that we can use him in his remaining year to mentor and to guide some of the new personnel coming up in the organization. We're an organization going through a great number of personnel changes, drop program, expansion, retirements. So we're at a point in time where we've got a perfect storm, in the sense that we've got great expertise, ready to train some of the new people coming online.
Is the current Special Operating Bureau, is that the bureau that would be responsible for Metro?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, one thing in the presentation, and maybe I missed it, we never quite heard what their role, other than Metro was there, was their command staff in charge of this operation?
The MacArthur Park operation you're talking about? No, they were not. The command was that of Chief Carter, Commander Gray, and Captain Egan was the designated incident commander for the MacArthur Park event. Special Operations had helped in drafting the plan, if you will, had done a number of the negotiations. Because Special Operations initially had a significant amount of their resources committed to this event.
The other thing I'd like to see if you'd clarify, just to see if it was accurate, it was reported that either during the event or prior to the event, that officers were present and being released. Was that accurate or inaccurate statement by the media?
The Metro unit, at one time during this event, they had a reporting time, I believe, if I recall, around noon time. And that was all, I believe, three platoons, as well as the mounted unit. And a decision was made at approximately 3 o'clock, based on the fact that the earlier, much larger rally downtown had ended peacefully with no problems. The Rampart, MacArthur Park rally was anticipated to be a much smaller event, and pre-planning indicated it would have the potential to be less problematic. The morning event, we were concerned about truancy, kids coming out of the schools, and in fact, being encouraged to come out of the schools. The afternoon event was after school hours, and was being presented much more as a family-oriented event. So a decision was made that by Chief of Operations, and supported by the deputy chiefs, to release two of the three Metro platoons and the mounted unit. C-Platoon was assigned down to South Bureau to engage in crime suppression activities directed at the gangs. Mounted unit returned to the stable, and the SWAT Platoon returned back to the academy to stand by. That left B-Platoon. That left B-Platoon also with, there's about 500 additional offices that were at that park. So that the feeling was, and I support this feeling even after the fact, that we had more than adequate resources to deal with what was anticipated to be an event of about 6,000 to 7,000 people peacefully demonstrating.
So we still had 500? I mean, because we couldn't figure out in the news report, the 500 were in addition or separate from what they talked about?
Between 500 to 600 personnel, which, as you recall from your time as chief, that's a huge number of offices for this department to have at any one specific location, and probably would be about three to four times the amount of offices we would normally have for an event of that size.
Let me ask you a couple of technical things on the tape. One of the things that was clearly stated through a variety of transmissions about rocks and bottles and sticks, but one of the things that was missing, from, at least from when I was watching it, we didn't see the accumulation of those rocks and bottles in any of the video. And other than, I think, the helmet shot where we had an officer hit and injured, there wasn't a lot of video to show actually these things being thrown. And I was just wondering whether there was any consideration of visually showing the park where the rock and bottles were left on the ground, or do we have any video that reflects officers actually being struck with these objects?
Again, as we've indicated, we have many hours of video. We also have a continuing appeal to the media, as they've been releasing additional video that we don't have, or at least we don't believe we've seen. Lieutenant, the one sitting at the table here is the one that's probably spent the most time, sitting in front of those monitors reviewing the video. What we attempted to give you was some of both what was being responded to by our officers, as well as the actions of our officers. So the radio transmissions clearly indicated that the officers felt, and they were the ones there, that particularly at the latter part of the event, that they were being rocked and mortaled continuously.
Yeah. So, I mean, but we have video of surveying what had been thrown that was left on the ground?
We have some video, some of the transmissions when they were conducting the final sweep of the park. I believe it was C-Platoon Jimmy that was up on, up on the right. They were the ones indicating that most of the radio transmissions you heard were coming from that platoon. Neither of the MacArthur Park cameras, or I think the department mobile cameras, were with that platoon at that time, if I'm not mistaken. Lieutenant, is that correct?
And then, another technical issue is just trying to follow the sequence of the tape, and it looked like there was a great deal of effort to keep the time sequences to the actions and the radio transmission. But one of the things was confusing to me was that in looking at the tape, there were comments made that certain photos or pieces were taken out of blogs or video. And I was just wondering, how did we patch them in in the sequence we placed them? Because at least one of them, it gave an impression of people armed locked across an area, yet it was out of a blog, but it was part of the presentation, as though that's what they were confronted with.
Lieutenant, if you'd identify yourself, please.
Lieutenant Jerry Rodriguez, Office of Operations. I'm one of two staff officers or managers in charge of the task force with the after-action report. As I stated last week, one of our primary goals was to be very fact-driven. And in addition to the excess of 10 hours that we have of video, we scoured the internet to try to piece together the entire story. Where we could not identify a time for a particular photo or a particular clip, we didn't. However, we were able to insert every photo based on the totality of what we read, and that's read and heard, saw. And that's over 10 hours of video. In many of those videos, you could hear the officers putting out broadcasts, which we then go to the radio broadcast, and we can hear that frequency. And we can then put a time, because it's timestamped on that radio frequency, and we can then match it up with the video that we're watching. And that's the technique that we used through most of it, to come up with a chronological. I believe the one you're talking about, sir, is the one where they're arm-in-arm. That's pretty similar to the photo that we had in actual, real-life tape, taken by our videographer, where you see that same group of individuals. And those group of individuals, we saw throughout, but I don't think we ever made a claim that that's where they were. That photo there was to depict these individuals, their manner of dress, to corroborate some of the descriptions of these individuals that were given over the radio.
No, I don't think you made the claim. I think the dilemma for those who are naive or didn't know how it was put together, would give an impression that that part of the tape was being taken during the sequence of time that you were articulating, although you stated it came from a blog. And it was just unclear, how would that blog be matched up with your very precise radio transmissions?
And we're going to have to ask you to press your button after this one. About a minute twenty over. Any answer to that?
You can say anything.
Again, that photo, we cannot state, and we made it very clear where we couldn't state where it was from, similar to the one on the helmet, where we have a still photo of an officer with what appears to be an object on the helmet. We can't tell where that occurred and at what time. But the individuals depicted on a still photo, based on how they were lined up, based on the background, depicts the similar, very close, although we can't say with certainty that it was at that same time. And again, to clarify, the reference with which that photo was taken is to highlight the individuals that we were talking about.
Thank you. Mr. Weston is our next speaker.
I move the previous question.
Okay. Any objection to moving the previous question? We have one speaker left on the queue.
Move the previous question. End of debate. There's one last speaker left. So, I think his name is Dennis Zine.
Again, colleagues, the heavy lifting on this will be, next week, there will be the next task force meeting, I think. The chairs are still finalizing the date on that, so somebody, or two weeks? Okay. Two weeks, excuse me. So there will still be opportunities. And just to clarify on the earlier piece, Mr. Zine, if there is no objection, we have put that formal request, as I made before, to the department for the incident command staff. We will get a formal answer or their presence here, so that we will get one or the, way or the other, if they decline, we'll get that formal answer back. If they decide to say yes, they will be here. Or at the, excuse me, the task force, because that's the next meeting on this. All right? Yes? Go ahead.
I didn't hear, did we say that it would be okay that if they would request executive session?
We did not address executive session. But our next, our next hearing on this would be the task force.
What I'm saying is, when we invite the commanders in, if they are aware that they
Oh, we'll give them that option, sure. Okay.
They would have that option.
Sure. We'll make sure that's part of the communication.
If I could just specify.
Sure.
As mentioned during the discussion, we talked about Captain Egan, Commander Gray, and if he's available, Chief Carter. Those are the three individuals that I understand were in command, those individuals that we have questions for.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zine. There's no further questions, no objection. Yes, Mr.?
City Attorney. Mr. Zine's request, are they obligated to follow that request?
That's a good question. There are questions as to whether there would be an obligation for the officers to come.
We've been informed, Mr. Labonge, is that, under the police bill of rights, they don't have to. We do have formal subpoena power as a body in general, but that's a further step, and we'd have to consider our legal obligations.
But I'm a member, I understand that. I understand that. I just wanted the city attorney's opinion on that.
Yep.
Because these are the managers of the police department. You know, we don't call John Wery to the table, we call Dennis Zine to the table. You know, and that's kind of what I'm thinking, but we'll hear it from the city attorney.
Well, and as part of the formal request by the council, I'm sure the police department will be in consultation with the city attorney's office regarding their response.
Yep. And there's an understanding that there's no objection this year, police department is willing to pass on that request, so we will have that. Mr. Zine?
And as I understand, the policies that they have in change at the department, is when members of the department are directed to appear before a body for a hearing, there's a special order directive that they should comply with that. And if they want to come and say, we don't want to say anything, they refuse to answer any questions. But I think there's an obligation, if I'm not mistaken in the manual, that they're obligated to at least appear, and they have a discretion at that point, if they would to, if they don't wish to answer any questions. But at least for an opportunity for us to ask questions, and no disrespect to the current command that's here, but I think the concern that I and many of my colleagues have is the people who gave those orders and those directions, we'd like to hear from them. That's the issue.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Can I have a point of information?
Yes, Mr. Labonge.
For the general manager of the department? Would you want to speak for everyone in the department, or would you want them to come here and speak for themselves?
Well, again, we'll follow the city attorney's guideline. I sincerely doubt that any of them will appear, but we'll conform with the city attorney's opinion. Much the same as any of the offices that we find engaged in some use of force. If Mr. Zine then wants to request them to appear while they're under investigation, that would be up to them and their attorneys at our council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, we're just on clarification questions, otherwise, there's no objection to closing the debate. Mr. Carter, is there some clarification?
Clarification, Council President. When this legislative body asks any department or any individual within the city, employees or whatever structure, when we ask them to appear before this body, isn't it customary practice that we get, as we formally ask, that we get a formal response, instead of, it's unacceptable for them just to not respond or not appear, without letting us know, thank you, but no, thank you, or my attorney advised me I shouldn't, or what have you?
That is correct.
The bottom line is, a formal response is in order.
And that's what we've directed towards the department, and we will receive. Okay. All right. Let's go ahead then, and we will note and file this. And, or we have the motion that went before.
Right.
Which already passed, but this is the remainder portion.
Right. I think Mr. Weezer's motion was that the matter stays open, and is referred to the task force, and that there will be an update.
Right. So today's testimony will be noted. Okay? So let's ask city clerk if they need any formal vote on any of that. If you can clarify, city clerk, if there's anything we need to do?
That the incident command staff is to report to the next task force meeting?
No, that, sorry, that was, that was our discussion earlier. This is, we've now communicated to the police department, they've assured us that they will get a response from those individuals, so that is not requiring formal new action. So is there any other additional action required? If not, then we will move on to the next item. Okay? Thank you, colleagues. Next item, please. Item number 28 is before us, and I believe the cards have been withdrawn, those folks are no longer here. Let me call their names just to ensure, if any of them would like to be heard, we certainly will give them that opportunity. Michael York, Carol Haber, June Wiley, and Lois Sax, or Louis Sax. Sorry. If not, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on that. And if we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please? Or next items?
Mr. President, would you like to go back to closed session and finish up the few items that we have?
Those are the only remaining items, are the closed session ones?
Yes.
Okay. We'll now go back into closed session, colleagues, to finish up those items. If we can please ask folks who are members of the public to clear the room while we go into executive session per California state law to deal with executive legislative matters. Thank you. Colleagues, to finish up those items, if we can please ask folks who are members of the public to clear the room while we go into executive session per California state law to deal with executive legislative matters. Thank you.[558.91]